I'd like to say good evening to everyone. Welcome to the board meeting here at DeJohn Middle School. This is December the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And we are here about to go into closed session before we go into open session. Now, we are welcome and once again, tonight's meeting, we are about to go in the closed session, but before we do, the board is here to receive public comment on any closed session item. Closed sessions and we could be in open session to continue with the regular agenda at six thirty P M. If you are attending, you are attending the meeting in person here at DeJohn. And wish and wish to make a public comment now on a closed session item. You would need to submit an orange request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak. If participating by Zoom, you would need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by phone, there is no yielding a time to another speaker and there is no substitution of speaker permitted. Please finish up the orange card. And if you are here in the audience and you are in the Zoom or attending by phone, please get in line to speak by raising your hand now. Due to the Brown app, the board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. So we gonna the discussion for closed session. Government Code five, four, nine, five, seven, dash, seven. It's the conference with legal counsel, liability claims, public employee performances evaluation, public employee discipline dismissal, release and complaint and conference with labor negotiation. And then we will adjourn and come back into open session at six thirty P M. Are there any public comment on the closed session items?
There's no public comment.
All right. And now we will close out this section and go into closed session. This evening, we just came out of closed session. And now we're on our way to conduct the business of the board. Once again, welcome everyone to the board meeting here December the fourteenth. Just the regular scheduled meeting. To access translation of the agenda, click on the top of the webpage using the word English and translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available in the Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the Brown app or due to the ongoing COVID nineteen crisis, the manner in which and the manner in which the board occurs at me, excuse me, at the beginning of the meeting, public comment will last for no more than one hour and includes any agendas and non-agendized items. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. We are about to start public comments, so if you are attending the meeting in person, you would need to submit an orange request to address the board from form to indicate your desire to speak on the agenda item. Please finish up raising your hand with the orange card. Staff members will pick them up. If participating by Zoom, you would need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. In accessing the meeting by phone, there is no yielding a time nor is a substitution of speaker permitted. If you are making a public comment from Zoom, please raise your hand now. Due to the Brown app, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. And now we will stand for the pledge allegiance. And then after that, we have the land acknowledgement. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and
We would like to recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yum Muwakma Karakaloni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Thank you.
All right. And now we about to do an important thing. We about to minister the oath of our newly elected officials. Today's agenda is this evening is squaring in the returning trustees, Demetrio Gonzalez Hoi and Leslie Reckler. First, Demetrio Gonzalez Hoi will issue the oath of office and be duly sworn in. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi will continue to serve as a board member of the trustee area four. So.
There we go. Thank you, President Christian, and I'm gonna do it behind the podium because my wife and newly born daughter are on Zoom watching, so I apologize to the public. I'm not coming up there, but I'm gonna do it back here so they can see me through Zoom. Thank you.
You ready? Okay. Please reheate after me. Raise your right hand.
I, Demetrio Gonzalez Hoi.
I, Demetrio Gonzalez Hoi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this oath, that I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will and that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, President Christian.
Thank you.
And I have the pleasure of swearing in trustee Reckler. Good to meet you. Trust Reckler, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, so now we will continue with the rest of the information this evening. We're about to do the swearing in of the new president of the board. And so I'm just kinda just touch, touch on the area. According to the bylaws, agenda is the annual organization meeting, Education Code, Section one, eight, three, eight, three. And Board Bylaws ninety-one hundred requires the board to hold an annual organization meeting to determine the board president and clerk for the upcoming calendar year. As part of this item, the board will the board will point, the board will point the board secretary, authorized signatures and the schedule of regular board meeting and set as a board calendar for the year. Board by law ninety-one hundred states that board clerk would generally replace the outgoing president. However, based on the advice of legal counsel, the current board returns its restrictions to elect any board member to be president. And I want to say that I served as the president of the board for, from last year for a whole year. And now I'm shifting gears. But I enjoyed, enjoyed serving as the board president. And so now we will begin with the board president election. And is there a nomination for board president? All right.
Thank you, President Christian. I would like to self nominate for president.
Is there a second?
Smith, full seconds.
All right.
I don't think we actually need the second nominations, but I did want to nominate Demetrio Gonzalez Hoi for president. So I guess that would be a third.
Are there? Are there any other nomination? I invited the board to discuss the nomination. Any? No discussion. With the discussion complete, it calls for a vote for the nomination for board president. We would take a roll call vote. This would be vote to elect the first person, take the vote and the first person nominated and the second as the board president. All right, so we'll do a roll call. Trustee Smith Foe.
Smith Foes, yes.
All right, trustee clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
All right. Trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
All right, yes. Oh, and I forgot student trustees, students down at the end. Trustee Miles.
Miles Ye.
And trustee Sampa.
Sampa, yes.
All right, myself, yes. The vote passes. Okay.
Board, we're gonna take a three-minute break while we switch seats and prepare for the next part. Public, I apologize, we'll restart in three minutes. Thank you. Thank you, board, for electing me president. Now we're gonna move to the election of clerk. So we will let the clerk of the board for the twenty, twenty twenty-three, excuse me, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four calendar year per board by law ninety-one hundred. Is there a motion and a second for nominations for clerk for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four calendar year? And I will start by nominating trustee Smith Foes as clerk. And is there a second? Trustee Smith Foes.
Smith Foes, seconds.
Thank you. Is there a second nomination? Trustee Phillips?
I nominate Leslie Reckler.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Reckler, second.
Thank you. It's been seconded. Is there another nomination? Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on the nominations? Trustee Phillips?
I appreciate everyone who is putting their hat into the ring for this position. But I will be supporting trustee Reckler this evening. And there are two primary reasons for that. One, I think that trustee Reckler is a strong board member, a very strong board member. But the second reason is that trustee Reckler is the only board member who's never had an opportunity to be in board leadership. And if we're talking about equity and we're talking about fairness and we're talking about opportunity, to me, it's a no-brainer that we should pick trustee Reckler.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Trustee Smith Foes.
Uh, I want to be clerk. I deserve to be clerk because I deserved to be president last year when I got skipped. So I have to get back in the queue. I am a strong board member. I'm a strong, I take the voice of the community to this board every time. I don't slack up. I don't shy away from equity. I don't shy away from what's right. If this board wants to do what's right, they need to put me back in the queue and then next year, put me as board president and don't, once again, break your own bylaws. So I am advocating for me. President Gonzalez Hoi, I am complete.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Smith Foes. Is there any more comments? Okay, my comment, I would like to, the reason why I nominate trustee Smith Foes because I don't just think that she's incredibly courageous and always speaks the truth of what she believes. But I believe that she does deserve to be board president next year. And the organic and the way that we usually elect our president, like we elected myself today, is by being clerk and then becoming president. So that's why we'll be voting for trustee Smith Foes, even though I also agree with trustee Phillips. Trustee Reckler is a great board member, but we did skip trustee Smith Foes and it would be the fair and equitable thing to do. Are there any last comments before I call the vote?
And I earned it, trustee, President Gonzalez Hoi, I earned it.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees and officials. Okay, I'm gonna call the vote on the first motion, which was, and the first nomination, I apologize, for trustee Smith Foes. We're gonna do a roll call. I'll start with our student trustees, trustee Miles.
Miles Ye.
Trustee Sampa.
Sampa, yes.
Thank you, trustee Smith Foes.
Smith Foes, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Nay.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler abstain.
Thank you. And myself, I say yes. So trustee Smith Foes is selected clerk of the board for this square. Thank you. Now we're gonna move to the appointment of the secretary. According to by law, board by law ninety-one twenty-two, the governing board shall appoint the superintendent to serve as secretary of the board. Is there an emotion and a second to appoint Superintendent Dr. Hurst as the board secretary for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four's calendar year?
Smith Foes motions to appoint Dr. Hurst, secretary of the board.
Thank you.
Reckler will second.
Thank you. It's been moved and second. Is there any comments? Okay, we're gonna move to the vote. Trustee Miles.
Miles Ye.
Thank you, trustee Sampa.
Sampa, yes.
Thank you, trustee Smith Foes.
Smith Foes, yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, and I am a yes. So the motion passes and we have appointed now Dr. Hurst, our secretary of the board. Thank you. And then we have to also approve this, people who will have authorization for signature. The board president, board clerk and the board secretary may sign documents on behalf of the district as directed by the board. Is there a motion and a second to authorize signatures for the board president, clerk and secretary for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four calendar year?
Reckler will move the item.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Smith Foes, seconds.
Thank you. I will just call the vote. Trustee Miles.
Miles Ye.
Thank you, trustee Sampa.
Sampa, yes.
Thank you, trustee Smith Foes.
Smith Foes, yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, and myself, so yes. Vote passes in favor of signature authorization for the board president, clerk and board secretary for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four calendar year. And lastly, in accordance with board by law ninety-three twenty, the board will hold regular meetings each month, typically on Wednesdays. The following regular meeting dates in twenty twenty-three have previously been adopted. January eleventh, January twenty-fifth, February first, February fifteenth, March first, March fifteenth, April twelfth, April twenty-sixth, May third, May seventeen, June seventh, June twenty-first, and June twenty-first. The following additional dates for the twenty-three, twenty-four have also been identified. July twelfth, August second, August twenty-third, September sixth and twentieth, October eleventh and twenty-fifth, November first and fifteen, December sixth and thirteen, January ten, tenth and twenty-four, February seventh and fourteenth, March sixth and March twentieth, April tenth and twenty-fourth, May first, May fifteenth and June twelfth and June twenty-sixth. Is there a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting dates for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four calendars, calendar year? Trustee Reckler?
I just want to make sure, I think I heard you say it, but I want to verify. In the agenda, it has September twenty-third printed, September twenty-third is a Sunday. I believe you said September twentieth, which is a Wednesday. Can you reconfirm that?
Yeah, that's correct. We apologize. On the agenda, it's written correctly. It should say September twentieth.
Great. With that and the correction to September twentieth, I will move the existing dates and the additionals written as with the correction.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Is there a second?
Smith Foes, seconds.
Thank you. All right, are there any comments? Okay, we're gonna go to the vote. Trustee Miles.
Miles Ye.
Thank you, trustee Sampa.
Sampa, yes.
Trustee Smith Foes.
Smith Foes, yes.
Trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, and myself, so yes. Vote passes in favor of affirming the previously adopted regular meeting dates for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four calendar year. Finally, sorry, apologies to everybody, there was one more section. Finally, the board will establish a board calendar for the twenty twenty-three that includes the following. Board organizational retreat, which tentative date is January thirtieth or January thirty-first. Board organizational retreat, which tentative date is January thirtieth or January thirty-first, budget hearing on June seventh, twenty twenty-three, budget adoption, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, superintendent evaluation, tentative date, June twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, and the annual organizational meeting, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions on these dates? Okay, is there a motion and a second to establish the board calendar for twenty twenty-three? Uh trustee Reckler?
I will move the items. I would also like to add, though, both on June seventh and June twenty-first, that it is not only budget, but it is L cap as well. So if we could just add budget and L cap hearing and budget and L cap adoption.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Yes, we can absolutely do that. Is there a second? I'll second. Okay, um I'm gonna call the question. Let's move for a vote. Trustee Miles?
Miles, yeah.
Thank you, trustee Sampa.
Sampa, yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Vote passes in favor affirming the twenty twenty-three board calendar. That concludes our annual organizational meeting and agenda item B five. Now, we will move to the roll call, which will be the first under our new uh board. Uh superintendent Hurst, would you mind doing another roll call?
Absolutely. President Gonzalez Hoi?
Present.
Trustee Clerk Smith Folds?
Present.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, present.
Trustee Phillips?
Here.
Trustee Christian?
Present.
Trustee Miles?
Miles, present.
Trustee Sampa?
Present.
All present in California.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Um we will move to ratification of closed session. Dr. Hurst, is there uh anything that came from closed session?
Absolutely. Regarding agenda item A two point two, the board voted to reject claim number six one five two three nine dated eleven thirty twenty-two. Related to an alleged personal injury, the members voted as follows. Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Phillips, yes. Reckler, yes. Smith Folds, yes. And Christian, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst.
And we have one more item just to report out as well. The board took uh employee discipline disciplinary action and voted unanimously to terminate employee ID one zero five three seven seven. The board took employee disciplinary action and voted to suspend employee ID number one one seven eight one nine. The board voted as follows. Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Reckler, yes. Smith Folds abstained. Phillips, yes. Christian, yes. The board took employee disciplinary action and voted to demote, cross-train, and reassign employee ID one one seven four one nine. The board voted as follows. Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Reckler, yes. Smith Folds, yes. Phillips abstained. Christian, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Um and in a second, I'm actually going to ask for a motion so that we can move the recognition of student athletes before public comment. But before we do that, I did forget during the reorganization uh that we did have a thank you and recognition uh for our going president, uh president Christian. So I'm gonna pass it to superintendent Hurst for just one minute uh so that we can quickly recognize him, and then we'll move to the motion to recognition of our students.
We wanted to take the opportunity to recognize our outgoing uh president. Um being the president, um certainly a hard job. I'm sure that uh President Christian at the time felt uh the pressure and the stress, but I just wanted to take the opportunity as a superintendent to thank you, sir, for your leadership and for your dedication um to West Contra Costa Unified School District and to our students as well. We do have a plaque that we want to share with our president and want to share with everyone as well. And it is a plaque with a gavel, and it just says for our president, presented to President O three Christian, West Contra Costa Unified School District, Board of Education President, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Thank you very much for your dedication, sir.
You know, I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate my, you know, serving on the board, you know, as board president. Uh and I enjoy working along with all the trustees in the area. And um my heart is dedicated of serving our community, our service area area too, and and, you know, I am a product from El Cerrito High School. You know, so I was at El Cerrito for fifteen years. And and I carry the torch of of the students and staff uh because I wanna see stuff done right. So uh congratulations to the new coming president, and we got a lot of work to do. So still gotta move.
And I was sharing earlier in closed session uh to all the board members, my deep appreciation for all of them and the opportunity just to serve as the superintendent. But I wanted to just share also to um at that time, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, just a special thank you for um the relationship and also his mentorship and wisdom and the conversations that we've had uh one-on-one. I just wanna thank you for your service as well, sir, as the clerk. We also have a plaque to present to Mr. Dimitro Gonzalez Hoi. And it says, presented to Dimitro Gonzalez Hoi, West Contra Costa Unified School District, Board of Education Clerk, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Thank you for your leadership, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. I don't have to say anything. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Um okay, if with there, if there's no objection, we will move to item B ten and then return to public comment. Is there any objection? Wonderful. Okay, so uh item B ten is recognition of our student athletes. Uh Dr. Hurst, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you very much, President Gonzalez Hoi. I'm gonna ask if all board members could come to the front, if the the president can come to the middle. I'm gonna ask first if Principal Patricia Crespo can come on down. So as as the board is lining up in the front, we're gonna ask um the principal Crespo if you can recognize uh the coach, have the coach come down, and we have some special certificates to hand out.
Thank you so much for having us here. Uh good evening, Superintendent Hurst and board members. I'd like to um have you all help me welcome El Cerrito High School's phenomenal football coach, Coach Jacob Rincon. He has uh grown so much over the past five years, and I'm so lucky to have witnessed that. I'm also excited to see what the next five years will bring. Go Gauchos!
All right, uh good evening, everyone. Um first and foremost, thank you for having me here tonight. Um it's an honor and a pleasure to be able to come down to the school board and be able to um present these young men that worked so hard this whole season. Um but before I begin, I would like to thank a lot. Um first and foremost, we wanna thank God. Without him, uh none of this would be possible. God has uh helped these young men get up every day. Uh we didn't have no significant injuries through the season. Um so, you know, we just, thank you so much, and uh we love you for that. Um next, I would like to thank is the school board. Thank you for all the support uh for coming to games and being there and supporting us. We appreciate that. Uh we would like to thank uh district, Dr. Hurst, uh Michael Booker, Julio Franco, Summer Sigler, and Shaka Meriwether. We thank you uh for all the support you have done. Um last but not least, um I wanna thank our principal Crespo for all her support, staff members um for sport supporting these young men in the classroom. And um again, and the one who deserves it the most is our custodians for cleaning up after these young men, so. All right, so a little bit about um our team here, two thousand twenty-two NCS uh champions, El Cerrito Gauchos. These young men worked extremely hard this whole summer. Um we started last last year, January second, weight room and conditioning, and uh went all the way through. They made sacrifices and commitment um because their goal was ultimately to bring a championship to not only the community, but they wanted to bring it to West Contra Costa Unified School District, and you put us uh on the map of recognition as being champions. So um that definitely a goal they reached, and I applaud them. Now that I know that we all have seen them Friday night and seen what they're capable of. However, what we did miss was the long nights of uh writing essays, studying um and making those sacrifices. Um and I really wanted to give them recognition on our team GPA this year was a three point two eight, and they did a great job. Now, I know uh we're giving them recognition for what they accomplished on the field, but they know the bigger picture is um being characteristics characteristic men in our society, and that's definitely what we push, and we're uh pushing forward. And I'm just uh happy to, it it's an honor, and I'm glad to be able to coach these young men and be a part of their lives. Now, let me go ahead and move on to uh announcing names. First up, I would like to announce is uh Aaron Miles. Next, Carlos Acosta. Next young man would be Nathaniel Arcey. Guardian Bernard Harper. Damon Bernstein. D'Amelio Bigby. Donovan Lewis. Dominic Calhoun. Sione Fanaika. Jakari Gibson. Jermaine Hargraves. Daniel Harper. Markeith Harper. Kamani Jackson. Javon Bolds. Elvis Mafengano. Celeste Mafengano. Tony McAdoo. Michael Van Hook. Andrew Nichols. Richard Siaki. Zion Shelton. Warren Smith. Charles Sutherland. Uh Lita Wayne Thomas. Gavin Thompson. George Lynn. Tome Viakiso. Chad Walker. Christian White. Ronald Williams. Aaron Woodard. Karma Yashi. Zaire Eastman. And last but not least, Tyson Williams. And my last that I wanna give support to is my coaching staff. Um Donnie Davis. Lamont Thompson. Brett Roland and Tim Johnson. I thank you guys for everything for this year.
And we're gonna have the board remain up here, and at this time, we're gonna ask if Principal Kibbe Climbing, come on down, sir! Mr. Climbing, if you could do the same thing, recognize your coach and have him come up.
I wanna say good evening and thank you to the board, and thank you to all who are here. Thank you to our parents, the mayor. And uh I did wanna say this. Uh I don't know a lot about football, but I do know one thing, which is to hire the right guy and get out of his way. Wanna congratulate two thousand five graduate from Pinole Valley High School and now state champion Troy McConico.
Ah. Solid, solid. Good evening, good evening, good evening. All right, so same same thing for me. Uh first, thank you for all your support. Thank you for guys bringing us out and acknowledging these young men um doing what they do out there on the football field and as student athletes. Uh a big part for us uh going into this year is we wanted to restore some pride in Pinole Valley High School. But on top of that, but also to restore some pride into our area, our West County. I'm a product of West County. Uh West Contra Costa, like Kibbe just said, I'm a graduate of Pinole Valley High School. Uh it's important for us to be proud of what we do. We're proud of what we represent, we're proud of what schools we go to, we're proud of what district we are part of. Um for us in the section level, we go, we went and we get some private schools out the area. Uh they didn't know, obviously, they didn't respect where we from or uh what city we from, what cities we represent. And then going to the state level, the same thing. We want to represent West County, we want to represent the Pinole Valley um and put some pride in that. So the biggest thing for these guys, for us, um this school year, this this season, was we have to give these guys the tools and give these guys the opportunity to be great. Uh that could be in school, that could be on the field, that could be in any part of life. For sure, it's football because they like football. All right, they like to play football. That's the fun part. Um but we we teach them, we we kinda guide them and talk to them a lot about being great in what they do. It's easy to play football. It's easy to be great in football. Um but once you reach that excellence, you can also take those same skills, the same thing we did, same thing I did. I was a good football player, but obviously, you know, football ain't everything, right? Football ain't everything. But everything I learned in life is growing up in Richmond and is playing football. All right, everything, all the tools, all the guidance, all the rules and all the morals came from that football field and growing up in the city. Um so, these guys worked their, they worked their butts off. I don't know if you can cuss, I can't cuss. All right, they worked their butts off. Um so it's on them. But again, the same message for us is always, if they can do it on the football field, they can be excellent on the football field and represent the West County uh school district and represent their city. They can also represent in the classroom, represent his fathers, represent his husbands um down the road. All right, so without further ado, um announcing one by one, and we'll talk a little bit after. Try to slow it down. Wrinkle, wrinkle's going up too fast. Uh for first, uh not here, we got Benny Brook. Not here. And we got Shante Chapel. Nathan Chow. And then Leo Crisato. Next up, we got Gage Eda. Next up, we got Jacob Evans. Next, we got James Gordon. And next, we got Mike Gettr. Like Mike. So we got Big Josiah Silo. Got Amado Hernandez. Got Messiah Howard. Jason Huttonberg. Anthony Jimenez, Larry McDonald, Eddie, and we got Eddie, Eddie Nguyen. Got Dennis Ray. Got Mohammed Rose. Right up. Donovan Robinson. Ellis Umd. Marcus Thomas. Clayton Thomas. Clayton Thomas. Got Tony Thompson. Vincent Reeve. Kenny Valopena. Malik Viewans. Amari Watson. Maddox Woo. Got Harrison Price. Got Julian Malone. Leo Lopez. Got Jedrick Merriagn. Got Luis Valencia. David Torres. That's it, that's the last one. Alright, so once again, congrats to the, congrats to the fellas, congrats to the young men that did it. Alright, shout out to our coaches. We got a couple of coaches in the house. Uh, Dave Johnson over here, longtime West County guy. He was an oiler, but we respected, we loved Dave. We got Steve Porter back there. He was a Titan, but he is Spartan now. And then we thank the families, we thank the families for showing up. Our family, our community is strong, our community is what brought us here. All the moms, all the parents, all the younger siblings that's coming up. Thank everybody. 2002 Pinot Valley Spartan State champs, NCS champs. I'm out.
And also the, the president Gonzalez Hoi asked me to recognize Mayor Devin Murphy that's in the audience as well. Mayor Murphy, we're gonna ask, if you can come up and say a few words, sir? Did you want to come up and say a few words, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. First of all, I'm Mayor Devin Murphy. I just want to say congratulations to our football players. Uh, the city of Pinot is so proud to support you all. We recognize the hard work you all put in. And um, I just wanted to say that we're ready to support you all next year. We're gonna make sure we host a parade. We're so excited to make sure we just get this community out. This is a big, big deal. Let's make sure we do it. Congratulations to both teams and to both schools and thank you all for all you do. So, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much to our students, parents and community for joining us on this wonderful celebration of our students. Uh, we are going to move forward to public comment. As trustee Christian mentioned earlier, people in the Zoom have a public comment, please raise your hand. People in the audience have public comment, please fill out a card and bring it to us as soon as possible. We're gonna start with people in the audience here at Dejean. Sorry, I'm gonna wait a second until everybody hits out. Okay. Okay. Um, is there a public comment from Dejean?
Yes. Our first public comment is Pedro Agredano.
Thank you. And just a reminder, we have two minutes for public comment per person. Thank you.
Well, first, congratulations President Gonzalez Hoi and Clerk Smith Folds. I am here and just to remind you a couple of things. Um, although that everybody would like to know and that we have a lot of people in the trades and stuff like that. You don't. You have a very limited for the amount of work. It's 60 sites, which is schools and offices. Currently, you have one metal worker, one welder, which is a sub because the original welder is shirt. One tile flooring person, one roofer, one concrete mason worker. Two people that deal with the playgrounds. One is a sub uh, working right now. You have two locksmiths. You have two glazers. You have three plumbers. Two plumbers are out at, at the time being. Uh, you have three electronics. One person has been out for almost a year. You have three HVAC technicians. You have three carpenters, four painters and four electricians. There is a lot of work on the sites. There is really very little preventative maintenance that we can do because we're rushed and we need to do. Uh, the board members visit sites. One thing that you can do is look at stuff hanging from lights. Uh, returns to the furnaces block. That all affects the work. It causes damages. And also, maybe when they reach out to you, you might be able to ask them, have you put in a work order? We cannot visit every site to make, to acknowledge everything that is going wrong. We try our hardest and as the superintendent has seen us in a meeting that we had, we pay attention to what's there. We saw something wrong in his office, we took care of it. We tried to do that at every site, but it's not always possible. The fact that uh, principals, staff are reaching out.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is Gabriel Michaletti.
Hello, my name is Gabrielle Michaletti, UTR's elementary director and first grade teacher over at Verde Elementary for seven years now. Um, I want to piggyback on what he was just saying and say, I come into my classroom every morning, hasn't been cleaned in two, three months. Um, I brought a vacuum in, so my carpet's at least clean for students. They get points at the end of the day for helping me clean the classroom. That's not my responsibility or their responsibility. The bare minimum you can provide for students is a clean classroom and I am not unique in this. Anyways, I'm also really curious about where the misunderstanding here is. It's difficult to get much more unequivocal than over 97% of us voting that we are willing to strike to make sure we can attract and retain qualified teachers in every classroom for every student. I hope that we all have the same goal here to prepare students to achieve their fullest potential. In service of these goals, we need to attract credentialed qualified teachers to our district and retain the ones we already have. Again, over 97% of our voting members approved a strike. That is not a trivial number. We are sick and tired of being disrespected and we are ready to fight for ourselves and the students of this district. This is our community. We don't fly up from Santa Barbara. We don't fly it over from Oakland when it's convenient. Your district does not exist without educators. You better start acting like you understand that. We know the history of this district. We know what we've given up in the past to help the district and we know what we deserve now. Prolonging this process puts undue stress on the community and your staff. You can end this now by giving us the contract we deserve so we can put our full energy into our students and building this community. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Mark Mitchell.
So, good evening Superintendent Hurst and congratulations President Gonzalez Hoi and Clerk Smith Folds. And thank you for your service, Board Member Christian. Um, and the rest of the board, uh, my name is Mark Mitchell. I'm the executive director of the United Teachers of Richmond. And I wanted to just put out a uh, warning, a caution as you go through the first interim report being provided to you by staff tonight. It is full of uh, miscalculation, not miscalculations, but misstatements of fact. It under projects revenue in the tens of millions of dollars and it over projects expenditures and liabilities in a similar manner. Um, for example, the 2324 uh, projected COLA from the Legislative Analyst Office now stands at 8.38%. Six of the eight quarters on which that COLA is determined have already passed. It's not a question about whether that will come in. It's a question about whether it will be more. In the, the first interim report that you're being provided, that number is a 5.3%, a full 3% less than what we know will actually come in. Similarly, in the 2425 uh, school year, the projected COLA in the uh, report you're gonna receive from staff is uh, 4% when we know it's projected at 5.3%. Additionally, because of the educators of this district and their union standing up for students and achieving the Proposition 28 being passed by California voters, this district will receive $4 million in additional, additional permanent ongoing state funding for arts education beginning in the 2425 school year and that will go on forever. So uh, I want to say there's a lot more money than what's represented in that report. Please approve it because we need to get out from under the county supervision, which never should have happened. Um, and we look forward to reaching an agreement that respects the educators and students of this district. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Eric Swabek.
Good evening, board. My name is Eric Swabek. I've been a teacher at Lake Elementary for 22 years. I have seen a lot of history in this district. I'm here to tell you that currently our district is not in good, solid health when it comes to serving our students. We have thousands of students currently without a permanent credential teacher in the classroom. We have um, needs, needs that are not being met for our English language learning students and our students who need remediation after the pandemic. I can see it. I have 25 kids in my third grade classroom and many of them need a lot of additional help, which I do my best, but they really need um, additional support in the form of small uh, uh, small groups and um, you know, want, they really need one-on-one help. And we uh, this, the United Teachers of Richmond and the district have worked hard to get a grant, community schools grant, um, over $30 million. We need that money now. We need it in our classrooms now to help those students. We have a churn uh, in our schools. We have um, 100 to 200 teachers leaving this district every year. You can't have a healthy district with that kind of turnover. You can't attract people. This cannot be a destination district if you have that kind of turnover. It doesn't take much math to figure out that if you're starting a wage of a teacher is $55,000, they're taking home maybe $3,500. I don't know if you've seen the rent around here, but you're not gonna retain teachers. So salary and community schools, those two sticking points, you, we have to move beyond that. We have to move beyond that. We have to have a, an agreement. We can't stall. There's urgency here. Our kids need our help. They don't need any more of this politicking. We need to come together and we need to get a contract that meets those needs of the teachers, the educators and our students.
Our next public comment is Sam Clear.
Good evening. My name is Sam Clear. It is my sixth year as a third grade teacher and union representative at Siege Elementary School. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and listen. I am here to emphasize the urgency of including community schools' language in our contracts. Siege is a strong community school. We all came back from last year and caretakers are choosing to send their students to Siege. We went from enrolling around 200 students to over 260 students this year because families were excited to work with our staff. The staff and families act as a foundation for a community school. However, our facilities leave us feeling unsafe and insulted. Rats, mold, heat, holes in the floor and falling ceilings are just a few of our concerns. While I can only speak for myself, I will tell you, I feel hurt. Every day I get to school about an hour before the students arrive in order to prepare. In this silence, I look around and feel defeated and depressed. I look around and begin to convince myself that I deserve this treatment and normalize the situation. Now I can't imagine how a child would internalize working in these cruel conditions. How would learning in this inhumane environment affect one's sense of self and development at such a young age? While I thank you all for visiting our school and addressing our concerns, caretakers and community members are still complaining and holding you accountable. These are just a few of our Williams complaints. There are about 50. Unfortunately, I couldn't find these forms in other languages. The process to complain is inaccessible. If we include community school language in our contracts, Siege and other schools will be protected. We need to learn from Siege's treatment and move forward. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Christina Baronian.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Christina Baronian. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Lake Elementary School in San Pablo. I've been teaching in Richmond and San Pablo for 11 years now. And um, over my years of teaching, I've had kids that tell me they want to be a teacher. And it always makes this pride and joy, you know, inside me and I had this really messed up experience a couple of months ago. I'm sitting in my classroom and one of my kids comes up to me and she's struggling as a student. She's reading at a kindergarten first grade level and she's in fourth grade, but it doesn't stop her. She tries so hard and we're doing writing. And she comes to show me her writing and says, "Look, Ms. Baronian." And I was like, "What does it say?" You know, because I couldn't really read it. She said, "It says, 'I want to be a teacher, like you, Ms. Baronian. I want to be a teacher.'" And the thought in my head was, "Why? Why would you want to be a teacher?" It hurt me deep in my soul that that was the thought that came to my head, head after 11 years. I love being a teacher. I give everything to this job and my, my reaction was literally, "Why? Like, don't do that to yourself." I feel disrespected all the time by the administration in this district. We are not asking for something crazy. I'm asking to get a I'm asking to get a competitive salary to be able to live. I'm asking to work at a profession that used to be revered and respected so that I can go back to the thinking of, "Yes, be a teacher. We need teachers like you. Yes. Help make that a possibility. Give us the salary raise we deserve."
Our next public comment is Mark Moran.
Good evening, Dr. Hurst, trustees. Congratulations, President Gonzalez Hoy, Clerk Smith Folds. In the past, I've stood here, even emailed you, trying to reason. For ten months, I've tried to reason with the district bargaining team. We know our proposal is necessary to recruit and retain teachers in this district, to make competitive salaries. We know it is affordable. We have demonstrated that. Mark Mitchell demonstrated why that message that your district staff is giving you is inaccurate and misleading. Reasoning didn't work. Based on the emails I got, after the last board meeting, I thought that I had been heard to some extent. Based on the behavior of the district team at mediation yesterday, I was wrong. I can't give confidential details, but let me just say this. I taught high school for fifteen years. I taught middle school for seven years. I have never been disrespected as I was yesterday. Not by language or tone, but because a district team that said they declared impasse to bring a state mediator in so we could reach agreement, moved away from agreement yesterday on financial issues and took no step to resolve the areas where they are attacking our members' rights over their professional lives. If you will not listen to our reason, you will listen to our power. Our members voted ninety-seven point three percent to authorize the strike. That's it. It's done. Ninety percent of them participated. Your district team complains that we can't vote on a collaboration calendar because people don't participate in the vote. Well, they participated in ours. This is not a game. You are playing with people's lives and students' education. This is real.
Our next public comment is Jay Sinat.
Hi, my name is Joyce and I'm a district parent. I'm also the community school manager at Bay Area Community Resources, which is a district partner. I started in the district in two thousand and three as a Healthy Start Coordinator at Chavez Elementary. And the roots of community schools in our district go even earlier than that. But Healthy Start was an iteration of community schools. Most recently, I was the community school director at Helms Middle School. I know it's a model that works and it has incredible potential. And we're very excited for the traction that can happen now with the state's historic investment. We're receiving thirty million dollars to improve and expand a model that transforms education by engaging all stakeholders, students, families, staff, community members, especially those stakeholders who have been unseen, unheard or undervalued. We're bringing them to the table to work together to understand what the needs are and to work together to respond to those needs. There are no two community schools that are alike, but in all, power is shared, voices are lifted, resources are organized to ensure that all students can find success and health. It's a model that meets the moment right now because we can't in good conscience return to the old ways. Our hope is that the district will embrace and invest in this incredible opportunity. Some ways you can do that are by helping with a robust campaign to raise awareness. Help with time. We have to take the long view on community schools because step one is to build trust with all stakeholders. And that's hard and we should go at the pace of trust and not of the systems. It takes time to build engagement, to try new things, to let administrators learn. It's a model that will promote equity, inclusion and joy, and I hope that you will continue to grow it here. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison.
Good evening, Board. And this will be the last time we'll see each other till next year. So I just want to say a couple of things. Thank you so much, all you trustees that have participated in supporting the BSUs and the youth in dealing with the discrimination that they're facing on campus. Our youth are facing a lot of discrimination and being called names. And this is not just by other children. These are adults on campus that are not supporting our youth in organizing. Our youth incident just recently happened and I will be talking to Leslie Reckler, Trustee Leslie Reckler, about this at her school where our children picked a week for February, a month, excuse me, for the month of February. I was disrespected and I want Dr. Hurst and Leslie to go support these children in addressing your staff about what she did to them. And you can talk to the principal because I already talked to Mr. Graham about it, but I want you guys to go follow up because these children are being mistreated at this school. And Jamila already is aware of some of it because she has visited the BSU at El Cerrito. You guys need to get over there and support those children. Harm is being caused by your staff. And I think they have a meeting tomorrow. So you guys should see if they do and go pop in and talk to those children and hear what's going on. And I suggest all the other trustees in your area, go to your high schools and see what's going on with your black youth. It's not nineteen sixty. But if you talk to those children, they're getting treated like it's nineteen sixty. And it's not right and it's not fair and they're, and they're, adults are causing harm to our children. And black parents do not want to continue to accept that. We're going to start pushing back and making noise and not accepting that from other adults causing harm to our children. So thank you and Happy New Year.
Our next public comment is John Savala.
Good evening. First of all, congratulations to our re-elected trustees Reckler and Gonzalez Hoy. Congratulations, President Hoy, Gonzalez Hoy, Clerk Jamila Smith Folds. And thank you, trustee Christian, for your service. I'm here tonight echoing what we've already heard and what's already been said. But tonight I want to speak directly to President Gonzalez Hoy and Superintendent Hurst. I don't need to repeat many of the facts that you've heard tonight, but I want to restate that number. Ninety-seven point three percent of our members voted to authorize a strike. That is absolutely serious and that is absolutely significant. We are at a moment in this district where we have, as educators, and I know you as well, we have weathered crisis after crisis and now we are here at another one. And in this moment, I have heard from so many of you that you want to support the teachers, that you want to care. I agree with my, our bargaining chair, Mark Moran. What I experienced yesterday was frankly disrespectful and a waste of time. We need to take this seriously. So to the two of you, we need to figure out how to get there. We need to have, we need to make sure that we uplift our teachers. I keep hearing us talk about our financial solvency and I'm concerned about that, too. I was here in twenty nineteen. I went through that, those cuts, and I bet a lot of those people did, too. We weathered the brunt of it. But if we don't understand, if we don't connect our finance, our finances with this teaching crisis, it's just going to get worse. It's going to compound and get worse and worse. These folks are telling you they are willing to fight and they are willing to take it where it needs to go to make sure that we have the schools that our community and our students deserve. The schools that our community and students deserve. Please, President Gonzalez Hoy, Superintendent Hurst, let's get there.
Our next public comment is Dominga Rivera.
Hi, good evening. I am the concerned parent of Lake Elementary School. My daughter is third grade there. I don't know if you guys are aware of the child's education. The whole district, the kids are below grade level in reading and math. Like, where is the thirty-three million dollars you guys are getting? Why is it not going into these kids' education? Why are our ESL students not receiving the help they need? Like, where is that money? Give the teachers what they deserve. They have a right to get that raise. They work with the kids twenty-four, seven. They stay after school to help kids that need that extra help. What more do you guys want? For all the teachers to leave? If the teachers go on strike, I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a parent and I have parents on my, with me. We are going to go on strike with the teachers. We are going to stand strong with them. I don't care. You guys can do whatever you want, but you guys need to stop this now because if we go on strike, it's only going to affect these kids. It's not going to affect you guys sitting there and it's not going to affect the teachers. It's going to affect the students. And supposedly, you guys are here for the students. Show it. Stop this and just give them what they want and let these kids get the education they deserve. Because right now, they're not getting it. And you guys are not giving any money towards it either. Because we need teachers aides. We need a lot of interpreters for these ESL students that do not even speak English. And they're in a class where the teacher speaks English. How is that possible? Like, what is going on? Wake up. The teachers are giving you a ninety-seven percent that they're going to go on strike. That is going to affect our babies. You're saying that we're a community. Show it. Show it for these babies because they need you now. So show up and give the teachers what they want and what they deserve. Because us parents, we're with them. Everybody at Lake is with these teachers. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Mariela Gomez.
Good evening. I have always wanted to be an educator, ever since I first stepped into Chavez. And I have never felt more pride in myself or the students that I teach every day. However, I am very disappointed by the actions, or in your case, inactions that you have been showing us. I'm a TK teacher. I have twenty students, no aide. Those are four and five-year-olds. And in California, it's supposed to be a ratio for twelve to one. I guess you can make math. And even though my school is doing its hardest to try to help me, it is ultimately you who is not following these, these actions. I'm doing my absolute best. Everybody here is doing their absolute best. But we are still continuing to fail our students, not because we lack passion or love or care for them, but it's because of your lack of support. If you care about our students, you need to show that you care about us and support us when we need it. Now, you've, you are always telling us that we need to support our kids. So show us. Let me live in a place where I can say that we care about our educators, our students. Because right now, I can't say that, honestly. And as a student from this district and I had dreams of working with this district, my dream isn't fulfilled yet. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Francisco Ortiz.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Hurst and community. My name is Francisco Ortiz and I'm a homegrown teacher and community schools organizer for United Teachers of Richmond. As one of the three co-chairs for the Districtwide Steering Committee or Community School Steering Committee, I urge you to increase and solidify the district's commitment to the community school strategy in West Contra Costa. UTR's collaboration with the district and the city of San Pablo helped secure thirty million dollars, which is the fifth largest implementation grant in the state. Shared governance and mutual accountability through authentic power sharing with students, families, educators and the community is the foundational glue that supports a transformative and sustainable model of community schools. You'll notice that both I and the City of San Pablo co-chair are not presenting in the community schools presentation tonight, and you should really question why that is. In the letter I shared with you all on November sixteenth, I shared a concern that the California Department of Education may withhold future funding for the community school grant if some of the program deliverables are not completed. This point has been reiterated to the community school directors and principals by district staff. Evidence of shared leadership and governance is one of those program deliverables. In the same letter, I also lifted that our district raised two red flags according to Public Advocates Quick Start Guide to Community Schools. Those two red flags were omission of the grant application on the district website and omission of students and families on the Districtwide Steering Committee. While I'm glad that the district has added the grant application after those concerns were raised, we are still lacking student and family presence on that committee. UTR is a strong supporter of community schools. We have unanimously passed a resolution at a representative council. We have resources on our community, on, for the community on the UTR website and we will continue to be a partner in implementation and evaluation of our community school strategy as outlined in the grant narrative that is included in the attachments of tonight's presentation. I also invite you to read the discovery report in the attachments to see how UTR has been an authentic partner and leader in the community schools' work. To date, it's time that our district meaningfully commits, commits to authentic power.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is Patricia Garretts.
Hi, I'm Patricia Garretts. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Perry's K-8. And I started in this district six years ago and I came on really close to the beginning of the school year. And I remember the first staff meeting, the principal was like, "And I'm happy to announce that we have a full staff." And everybody clapped. And I was like, "Okay, that's weird." It wasn't weird because ever since, every year, an average of eight educators has left my school, some for different schools in the district and some the district entirely. Now, that has always, you know, brought up a little bit of fear in my heart and probably everybody's heart, you know, at the school. But usually, we've managed to mishmash and attract other teachers to come and fill in those things so that students start the year and they have a qualified credentialed teacher in their classroom. Not so much this year. This year, we started with seven classrooms without teachers. We still have four classrooms without certified permanent teachers. It's awful. I, for the first almost month of school, had my first graders in my class, who I'm trying to, I don't know, fumble together any sort of curriculum because I don't want them to fall behind, while I'm trying to also wrangle a bunch of five-year-olds who have come from absolutely nowhere and don't know how to do school yet. It's madness. It's absolute madness. And that's what everybody in this district is dealing with right now. And you're telling us what? That you don't care. You don't care. You don't care about us and you don't care about those kids, those first graders who didn't have a teacher, those two second grade classes that didn't have a teacher, the three middle school classes that still don't have teachers and the fifth grade class that still doesn't have a teacher at my school. Who knows if there'll be anybody there next year? That's all I got to say.
Our next public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening. I am Kimberly Chamberlain. I have PTE Local Twenty-One SSA Chapter President. Happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, happy anything that you want to celebrate that you are not having to put on shoes and regular clothes for, in the next two weeks. I am very happy to say that our unit has worked very diligently. And I'm not going to say we drove down the district, but I think we came to a very, very And I'm not gonna say we drove down the district, but I think we came to a very, very good cooperative agreement. And I'm very proud that we were able to do that, even though it took us nine months. We did a very good job together working on that. Not everybody's happy, and I understand that. Everybody wanted a piece of the pie, both sides of the table did, but I am glad that we were able to come to a very satisfactory agreement for now. Two years, we're back at the table. And I collaborate with all of my union colleagues, realizing I do not have enough red in my wardrobe any longer. So you get my red shoes and that's about all I can wear anymore that's red. I do hope that we can all come to a very good agreement. My other role is as a supervisor in this district for our attendance programs. And I am asking that we together come to some sort of acknowledgement to get our students into classes. We need to get our kids back in school. Our attendance is going down. The enrollment's staying steady, but our attendance is going down. And yes, Mr. McIntyre is now looking at me like, oh, Lord. But yes, we need the kids. We need something to get our kids back in school. Please, let's work cooperatively.
Our next public comment is Patricia Durham. Our next public comment is Jeffrey Bean.
Good evening, President Gonzalez Hoi and Clerk Smith Folds and Board, Dr. Hurst, F. One caveat, after I got my master's degree in twenty sixteen, I stopped working to get additional units because it wouldn't allow me to advance further on our limited salary scale. So I'm already in the right-hand column. When I and my colleagues, colleagues gathered to vote on a strike last Wednesday, I showed them some spreadsheets, one from our district and one from the new agreement that Martinez Unified reached. Next year, if all things stay the same, I'll make a little bit short of eighty thousand dollars. With what you, uh, WCCUSD is offering, six percent, four percent, I'll make eighty-eight. If I were to be in the right-hand most column in Martinez next year, I'd make ninety-six. Why would any teacher come to our district to work when they could make eight thousand dollars more in a nearby district? Our school, Shannon, got new internet this week. It's worse than the old internet. And the old internet worked fine. You're voting on a new data center today. The, your board documents say that it's because of the current one is nearing the end of its useful life. Is that something that's necessary? That's a lot of money. Make sure you're spending it well. I had a former student stop by my class last week. I hadn't seen her in four years, mm, three years. She was somebody I worried about during COVID. She stopped by, gave me a card. She's an eighth grader. Made me very happy, and I want her to have teachers in the next few years. So please make that happen. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Mark Schalls.
Good evening. To start, I want to thank, or actually congratulate first, Trusty Gonzalez Hoi for being the next year's president and Trusty Smith Folds for becoming the clerk. And also thank Trusty Christian for his service as president. So last year, his presidency began with a lot of controversy as to whether or not he was elected legitimately or not. Now, the district even hired legal counsel to come in and try to give an explanation about that. And it wasn't very convincing. So anticipating a vote this year, which may not go as Bylaw ninety-one hundred describes, I reached out to our parliamentarian, Tamara Dunning. Our bylaw says that the clerk will be advanced to the presidency. And I just wondering that was gonna happen this year. Well, it did happen. So again, congratulations to Dimitri Gonzalez Hoi. But I learned something very important. And that was our bylaw also has Section Eight, the clause eight in ninety-one hundred, which says that except in unusual or exceptional circumstances, the format will be followed. Well, I'm here to say unequivocally that the nomination of Mr. Christian as board president was that unusual or exceptional circumstance. That was never explained to us. So there was that controversy which even echoed through this room tonight. So I would like to thank again Mr. Christian and say without any question that in my opinion, and hopefully I've convinced others, that you are, were absolutely and one hundred percent legitimately elected as the president last year and that there's never again a question regarding that election. Thank you.
Our next public comment, we're now going to Zoom, is Jean Kinstler. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board members and community. I work as a kindergarten teacher at Verde. This is my ninth year. Last week, I was listening to the board meeting and I was shocked. Listening, I learned that the board voted to secure about seventeen million to cover the cost of raises for the WCCUSD employees. During this item, Mr. Phillips mentioned that he fully supports and believes that all of the COLA money should be used towards the employees. He suggested that the board vote to secure the entire approximate thirty-six million dollars that the state has given to the district for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We learned that this COLA funding is ongoing and would not be decreased. Mr. Freeze mentioned that the district did not have the entire thirty-six million dollars to be allocated that way towards the employee salaries. I and other community members are wondering, where exactly did the missing nineteen million dollars go? Or what did it get spent on? Or where is it in the budget? Where was it allocated? In addition, I'm at a community school. One of the community schools that existed before the record money, extra money that Dr. Hurst talked about at one of the board meetings. I am not at one of the ten new community schools that UTR helped secure the new thirty-million-dollar funds for. Why is WCCUSD resisting and refusing to follow the obligated rules set forth in the distribution of the community school funds? All members of the community should transparently know about the community money and how it is being spent. The whole community should have a say and be, and be directing the fund so that they better serve the community and their school. This should include parents, all interested teachers and staff, students, and the community of each community school. I do not want to lose those future funding because we're not following the rules and regulations that we agreed to when we accepted the money and it was folded into the WCCUSD budgets. Our communities deserve better. Their children deserve better. We need to provide what the community wants and needs to expand on our futures and the lives of those in the community. Do better. Show everyone by being the.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. So first, I heard, and I know this is true, that the new Kennedy football field that the end zones will not have like Kennedy lettering logoing. So I hope that is not true. If that is true, that could be an equity issue. Now to what I really wanted to talk about. So good evening, everybody. Today, I brought my high school diploma so my students could see the reward of completing those two hundred and twenty-five credits. I am Ms. Gash to them, but I am also a daughter, a mom, auntie, a niece, a friend, a confidant, and a very, very proud educator graduate of Kennedy High School. And I'm an unapologetic believer. I'm imperfect, yet perfect in how he created me. Soon, we will begin the holiday break. Please remember that the holiday season isn't happy and festive for all. And all includes children, adolescents, and adults. Adults who are our colleagues and our coworkers and our friends. Remember to be kind and caring and to give everyone and to give everyone grace. With all that being said, peace and blessings to you all. Happy holidays and looking forward to a great twenty-twenty-three school year.
Our next public comment is Christina Huerta. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Christina Huerta and I'm a teacher at Kennedy High School. I've been a teacher for sixteen years and ten of those have been in this district. Over the years, I've been asked by friends and family why I stay in this district. I always had an answer ready, but it's honestly becoming harder and harder to explain to others and even to myself, why I choose to work for a district that does not respect its educators and is failing their students. This district is failing the two hundred and forty-five Kennedy students who are currently taking biology, chemistry, or physics on the online platform Edgenuity. We were not able to hire two science teachers this year. And the district's solution was to enroll, again, two hundred and forty-five students on Edgenuity courses where they do not receive direct instruction. All they do is complete tasks online, watch videos, and answer questions without ever interacting with a teacher or peers. I don't know how we can expect anybody to learn any subject this way. There are even two sections of newcomers. That means students who are new to the country and they have to take biology, edgenuity courses and tackle coursework that is one hundred percent in English. Last week, I was able to observe my colleague Kumia Nagihara's biology class. And after I reflected on their awesome lesson, I thought about the one hundred and fifty-three students taking biology edgenuity courses and how they are being denied their right to equal education. This district needs to offer a fair wage to recruit and retain teachers. Otherwise, we are going to see an increase in edgenuity courses that are going to be offered because teachers will not come to this district. Think about the two hundred and forty-five Kennedy students you are failing when you deny us a fair contract.
Our next public comment is Colleen Ballantyne. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Colleen Ballantyne. I am a special education teacher at Ella Horst Elementary School. I am the Special Services Director and the United Teachers of Richmond, and I'm also the vice chair of the bargaining team. Yesterday was lame. Yeah, it was not fun. It was not effective. I am hearing other people that can be amazingly more passionate and articulate than I can at the moment. So I went online and grabbed a poem or two. So this is often read to preschoolers and kindergartners. If you really want to show someone just how much you care, the easiest thing to do is to learn how to share. Whether it's a toy or a book or your favorite teddy bear, it really doesn't matter, just as long as you play fair. Okay. Come on, play fair. Now, the one that's definitely not for preschoolers, look, this is it. Boss made a dollar, I made a dime. That was a poem from a simpler time. Now boss makes a thousand and gives us a cent. Well, they've got employees who can't pay the rent. So when boss makes a million, or what, I don't even know how many million at this point, and the workers make jack, that's when we strike and take our lives back. For every articulate thing that you've heard in passionate argument, it really is about taking our lives back because we cannot afford to live where we want to teach in the communities that we want to be involved in. Please reassess your approach and your math and just work this out. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Veronica Diaz. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I'm a union representative with Teamsters Local eight-five-six. And after months of negotiations, the classified staff ratified a contract in late November. We are grateful to have secured an agreement after two hard years of working through COVID, feeling understaffed, overworked, and underpaid. I truly hope that the agreed-upon increases in language changes will improve morale and help recruit new employees. However, I'm speaking to you tonight because our work is not done. The district declared impasse at the table with the United Teachers of Richmond, and the parties began mediation this week. After all of the work UTR did to secure a grant for West Contra Costa's community schools, it is disappointing that the district would push this issue to mediation rather than roll up its sleeves and bargain in good faith with, with its educators. Teamsters eight-five-six stands in solidarity with UTR. And while their contract is outstanding, there is no labor piece within this district. If UTR seeks sympathy and support from Teamsters Joint Council Seven, our statewide body of twenty Teamster locals who represent, among others, garbage pickup, delivery drivers, and the school bus drivers who service this school district, they will find it. An injury to your certificated staff is an injury to the classified. And we remain in support of UTR's, UTR's bargaining goals, which can only be described as incredibly reasonable. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sheila Reed Garrettts. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I wasn't sure how to unmute myself, sorry. I taught for forty years and now I'm a sub with West Contra Costa. And I actually went to Perry's the first week of school because they didn't have a teacher for little first graders who, of course, come to that first day of school with their heart and their soul and their head and everything ready for that special first day and first week. So I couldn't break their heart. It would break my heart. West Contra Costa can't and won't attract competent teachers with your severely non-competitive salary that you're offering. Teachers give their all and they take home work. They think about their students all the time. It's more than a full-time job and all they're asking for is full-time pay. We're talking about the physical and intellectual and emotional and psychological development of each student, and it requires our constant and nurturing commitment. You guys have the power to acknowledge and support your teachers and students by honoring teachers with the pay level that they earn every day. One of my favorite TV shows these days is Abbott Elementary. And one of the comments, one of the teachers made is this. Being a teacher is being asked to do the impossible year after year. And our only solution is to show up every day and try our best. Your teachers are showing up every day and trying more than their best. It's time for you to honor that. And again, pay them what they are earning and what they're giving and what they're doing. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Ted Lamb. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board and Superintendent. My name is Ted Lamb. I'm part of Elementary School, South Harding. I'm here to contribute in UTR. I have hard work over the past six years of our, and over the past three years, the chief of the unified school district, our students and the community.
Mr. Lamb, I apologize, but it seems your connection might be a little faulty, so we can't, you're getting cut off. So we cannot hear you very well. If you could maybe restart your internet. Sorry, Mr. Lamb, we're gonna move on, but if you fix your internet, you can raise your hand again. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sarah Creely. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Sarah Creely and I've been a teacher since nineteen eighty-nine. I've worked for this school district since nineteen ninety-two, which is thirty years. And I just want to say that having taught that long, education is changing. You know, I remember when it was all about IQ and now it's growth mindset. And that, in a way, makes me hopeful about what is possible to. And that, in a way, makes me hopeful about what is possible today. You know, the education has been getting unprecedented amounts of funding, you know, and so I know that the money is there. And the other thing that's unprecedented is the amount of teachers that voted to strike. Ninety-seven point three, and I think that has to do with, you know, understanding that equity does matter because during the pandemic, we worked and talked a lot about equity. And teachers refuse to be martyrs. You know, we're not going to be martyrs for you guys, and I believe in you. I love the, I love people on this board, and I respect every one of you. And I believe in your ability to come to a solution that will be fair and give us comparative salaries to Antioch School District, to Martina School District, to other school districts, so that we will attract teachers because there are one hundred and forty-five teacher openings right now. One hundred and forty-five classrooms that don't have a regular teacher. And please don't think for a moment that any person can just walk in their classroom and do that job because it's not true. We could, we are trained professionally. We go to college. I went to graduate work. I was a special educator. I teach children how to read. Okay, we are trained. You can't just pop anybody in, and we need people. We need more teachers. You have to recruit them. That's your responsibility. And community schools, how could you turn down thirty-two million dollars? That is insane. That's all I want to say.
Our next public comment is Mr. Ted Lamb. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Hurst. Thank you for your work. I'm a sixth grader at Harding Elementary School. I love our teachers and might comment on the negotiation between the district and UTR. Personally observed the dedication, hard work over the past six years of our, over the past three years to teachers and employees of West Contra Costa and above, beyond our students and the community at large for fair compensation to our teachers and staff in our school district, very high cost of living and historical inflation as we all are declared impasse, and there are prescribed steps that have to happen. The district develops its budget and plans for future spending. Entire budget ambassador program, within the first week, it was a night will start. My parting comment is that unless we have a long-term staff, we'll be here again. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Bill Hodges. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you, Board members and staff. My name is Bill Hodges. I am a returning teacher in my second year at Verde Elementary as a fifth-grade teacher. At the beginning of the year, I had my fourth-grade class that I was teaching dismantled and sent to one teacher. We had to remove one teacher as a result of funding and as a result of the decisions of the district. And everything that I've heard tonight from association leadership and others, other fellow teachers, it's disheartening. I worked here in this district five years ago, and I'm hearing the same things. After being gone for five years, I'm hearing the same discussion of the district making the same irresponsible decisions and disrespect for their staff and teachers, for their educators, and therefore for the students that you're supposed to be taking responsibility for, and it's disheartening. And I really hope that this board with some new leadership tells the superintendent, hey, let's get this settled and let's pay the teachers what they deserve. Thank you very much for your time.
And our last public comment for tonight is Reverend Andre Schumake Senior. Please unmute yourself.
Greetings, folks. My apologies. It's been a long day. First of all, I want to acknowledge the outgoing president, ultimately Christian, for his dedicated service and commitment to our community. He hails from the city and have worked at El Soto for a number of years. Thank you, Mr. Christian. The incoming president, Harvey Dimitri, you know, I used to run into you at board meetings, and I always tell you that you're gonna be on the board. You know, no, no, Reverend Schumake, I'm not gonna. But now you're the president of the board, and to Smithfold. Well, there's not much I can say about that. You're rightfully in the place where you need to be to meet the new needs of our community. Folks, it's been a long day. We had the El Soto BSU come out to Niestram during the regular school day, participate in activities during the recess and their lunch hour with them kids, and it was amazing. Those kids are asking me, Mr. Schumake, are they coming back tomorrow? That was wonderful. Not only that, the BSU provided Christmas gifts to all of our kids, and they were so excited about that. How amazing. And it just demonstrates how we can all work together to do the work that we need to do within this community. But I'm gonna say to the leadership, the incoming leadership, if you always do what you've always done, you will always get what you've always gotten. It's time for us to do something different in this district. We have to take care of financially our certificated employees and the classified employees. If you have a vision and a goal of what you want to do, if you don't have all them folks involved.
That concludes our public comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody who made public comment, especially all those that worked in our schools today and stayed late to make public comment. We really do appreciate you. Okay, board, we're gonna move on to agenda review and adoption. A couple of things. I spoke to Dr. Hurst. We are tabling items C two and F one due to time tonight because already eight-thirty. Then also for tonight, we are doing three questions per item and one-minute comments, except for the first interim, which will do five questions and one and a half-minute comments. If anyone needs more questions for that item, please, of course, let me know. Okay, are there any changes on the agenda apart from those that were just shared? Wonderful. Okay, if there are no objections, the agenda is adopted. We don't need to vote. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. And we did recognize our students. So we're gonna now move to consent items. Board, is there anything we would like to pull out of consent? Okay, I don't see any hands. Without objection, we can approve the consent. Are there any objections? Wonderful. Moving forward. Okay, Superintendent Communication, Dr. Hurst, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you so much. Can we bring up the slides, please? And next slide. So a few things we would like to share with the board. Just recognizing Sylvester Greenwood Academy, they had a financial aid night that was on Wednesday. The academy partnered with Ten Thousand Degrees and Richmond Promise to host that financial aid night. And students learned there about their financial aid options and other scholarship options as well. So we wanted to highlight that, and if we can go to our next slide. We also wanted to highlight celebrating National Chemistry Week at Lincoln Elementary. Lincoln Elementary School had an evening of chemistry fun. Brian Blask kicked things off with his colorful chemistry show. More than one hundred students and parents were delighted by disappearing water, elephant's toothpaste, the big flame in the bottle, and the acrylic oxygen rocket. Students also participated in a variety of stations, creating slime, dying for color, where students discovered that food dyes work better on some fiber, fibers better than others, scents from plants, mystery scents, and molecular models and more. And the next slide. We also wanted to highlight where we are with the goals, and we've been talking about this for a few weeks now. And I'm happy to report out that the board has just given me the thumbs up in moving forward and having conversations. There'll be a complete conversation at our next board meeting where I'll be able to break down each goal and share with you sub-goals and also where we're starting in each area, where we are projecting by the end of the year or the middle of the year. But excited to share with you, here's our goals that we'll be expanding upon at next board meeting. A focus on K through twelve literacy rates. The board has given a go-ahead to move forward with that. Next board meeting, I'll break down how we're disagagging that across grade spans. The second goal is ensuring all students make progress towards social-emotional wellness. Again, the next board meeting will expand on what elements are part of the social-emotional wellness. But I will share with you, a portion of it deals with the climate and culture at each school site, and a portion of it deals with incidents that are happening at the school sites as well. We also have the go-ahead on a goal of improving physical conditions of facilities and grounds. The next goal is around improving the performance and responsiveness of Human Resources Division. I'll be able to talk about it at the next meeting, how we're looking at reducing our vacancy numbers in classified and certificated, our retention goal, but also how we are reaching out across our system with our leaders and training key staff members. Also a goal around fiscal solvency. And we'll be able to expand on that a little bit more. And then the last goal we'll be talking about at the next board meeting is how we're focusing on strengthening communications across the district to elevate stakeholder engagement and awareness of district goals, initiative, and events. So we're excited that we have the go-ahead to move forward, and again, as I shared, we'll be sharing not only the goals at the next board meeting, but we'll also be talking about success indicators and also some actions that we'll be taking to get to our goals. Next slide. I also want to share with everyone where we are with strategic planning. A lot of the strategic planning work has been completed, but there is a body of work that I'm gonna talk about that is not being completed, which is the third bullet. We are looking early in January to meet with the board and get approval on the mission and vision and the graduate profile, which are those skills. A lot of work has been doing that, done to that mission and vision statement. There's also a body of work around the graduate profile subcommittee that's been developed and really focusing on the grad profile skills. And then the biggest body of work that still needs to happen is equity work across the district. And really, as I've been sharing, securing an equity service provider and really having the Guiding Coalition vet those providers. And one of the conversations that took place at the last Guiding Coalition meeting was around a research question. What are the top two to three equity issues we have in our WCCUSD community in our district? Or what equity issues facing students? Or what are the equity issues facing students, families, or staff within our community? So those are, that's a question. Those are questions that we want to propose to the equity service providers as we're thinking about who that's gonna be to help us do that work. There's also work that still needs to be done around unpacking the mission, unpacking the vision statement. What does each of those words mean in those phrases? And then there's ongoing work that's happening around goal setting. I just talked to you about some district-wide goals that's just been approved by the board. But here are our next steps there. I'll be sharing with you at the next board meeting metrics to measure progress. In other words, in each one of those goals, I'll be able to tell you where we are now, where we want to be, and when. So by the end of the school year, by mid-school year as well. And then other work that's happening around the goals training is really what is the plan? What are the actions? What are the levers that's gonna allow us to move toward our goals and achieve our goals? We call them lead measures. However, it's really the plan. We'll be sharing this information with the board, with the public, on what our plan is in each one of those areas. And then other work that we're doing with the goal setting is how we're gonna measure progress along the way for either feedback, course correction, and also accountability. And that's the work that we're doing around the scorecard and really making that scorecard available to everyone in the organization and everyone outside the organization. And that concludes my superintendent report.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Board, are there questions for Dr. Hurst from his report? Okay, are there any comments? Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Hurst. We're gonna move on. Okay, we're gonna go to our first action item, E one. The approval of the first interim for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I will pass it to you, Dr. Hurst and Dr. McIntyre. Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Dr. McIntyre.
Thank you, President Gonzalez-Hoy. Dr. Hurst, Board, it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening, giving you a first update since the adoption of the twenty-two, twenty-three first interim report. I'm really proud to be here tonight, mainly because this is a labor of love and hard work by a lot of very, very talented people. I do want to let you know that some of the people that are major players in this because this interim report represents tens and tens of thousands of transactions that include purchasing, budget, accounts payable, payroll, benefits, ASB, warehouse, internal audit, risk management, and state and federal programs, and I'm really excited that I've got three of our department leaders here tonight with us. We have Ms. Sungjae Cha, who's the Executive Director of Business Services and essentially our fiscal controller for the organization. She's in the red coat tonight with us. We also have Andrea Arnold, who's a coordinator in the green coat with us, a central part of the leadership team, as is Margarita Romo, who is also a coordinator in the business services team, wearing what I believe is a gray coat, at least from here. And I'm very proud that they're on this team and helped make this possible tonight. So one of the things that we have to acknowledge is that we are, as we heard from Ms. Kim Chamberlain, who's in charge of our attendance or tracking our attendance, is that we're funded when our students actually show up each day. And so while our enrollment didn't decline in the current year as fast as we thought it would, or, you know, in a greater amount than we thought it would, the frequency with which the students are in their seats every day is lower than historically normal. And that is not a uniquely West Contra Costa thing. In fact, And that is not a uniquely West Contra Costa thing. In fact, it's been a statewide. Issue that we've been hearing about specifically this year. So you know, as a follow-on and coming out of the backside of COVID. What does that really mean? It means in a typical year, on average statewide, most students will miss about four to five days of school. On average. But this year, we're seeing the numbers being upward of sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, which is nearly ten percent of the year. Statewide average and and West Contra Costa in this case is no different. That's important for two reasons. Obviously, we want the students in their seats because they're, they're not learning from their teachers. If if they're not in their seat, and and we've heard from many of our amazing teachers tonight. But they're also not, we're also not generating revenue for providing that instruction if they're not in their seats. And and while revenue is not the end-all, be-all of everything. It's really important that those students are there each day, so they're getting that direct instruction. So some of the things that we, we, we have to look at is the actual lag between. Or the, the, the difference between statutory COLA and our actual funding, funded COLA. This is a conversation that comes up a lot. I need to move where everybody is on the screen. There we go. This is a conversation that comes up a lot because we're, we're in this kind of odd case where this year, not only did we get our statutory COLA, which was a six point five, six percent. But the state augmented the COLA with, with, with Education Omnibus Trailer Bill, one eighty-five, Senate Bill one eighty-five. Which increased an augmentation to the COLA from six point two eight percent, which was in the original adopted budget. And in late August, we found out it was actually going up to six point seven percent. This was just a miscalculation. By the state because they assumed we had more students than we actually did. So they, they revised that number upward. And so what does that mean? It means that the community has this perception that, that. All of our funding, or at least the vast majority of our funding, received a rather large thirteen point two six percent COLA. And that, that's a, that's a great soundbite for, for the administration. But we have to recognize that we, as a district, don't necessarily see every penny of that. For two reasons. One, not every component of the local control funding formula actually receives the COLA and the augmentation. I'm specifically talking about transportation and the old TIG, Targeted Intervention, Instructional Intervention Block Grant. Those two components of the local control funding formula don't actually receive COLA. And so the weighted formula minus declining enrollment. Means that our year-over-year revenue growth for the local control funding formula was actually twelve point five percent. And there's that thirty-six point eight million dollars that we talked about last week when we were talking around commitments. So you generally, when we look at the first interim update. It, it's not quite as flashy as the adopted budget update, and we're working on making it a little, a little more graphic than it has been in years past. So I, I do apologize that you're looking at spreadsheets. I, I know spreadsheets are really exciting for me and probably only me and some of the business team sitting in the room. But that, but the numbers here are really important and with the story they tell. And what we're looking at is the change from what we had at the adopted budget. To first interim and for, and what's significant here is first interim includes the actual expenditures. From July first of this year through October thirty-first of this year. And then it includes the, the projections that we have carrying forward from November first through the end of this fiscal year, June thirtieth. And for the next two subsequent financial years. Here you see that we see that the beginning fund balance is actually five point two million dollars higher. Than we originally thought it would be when we were, when we put together our adopted budget. The reason for that is because when we closed the books for last year, we actually had five million dollars more than we had anticipated or projected. So that, so we haven't, we started with a little bit better starting point. We also see that because when we adopted our budget, we didn't, we didn't, we were using the May revised numbers. So we had a lower L C F F number. We had, we didn't know about the three block grants. And so as we put those in here, we see, we see increases in revenue sources. We see commensurate increases in expenses to match those new revenue sources. And so what you see is from the adopted budget. We thought the, the general fund would have a deficit of sixteen point one six million dollars. But that, now we see that we, we believe or we're projecting we're going to end the year at five point three million, five point three five positive. Million dollars. So that's a ten point eight million dollar swing for the better. So great news there, mainly because of the additional revenue. And so what is the impact of that? It means that our combined ending fund balance for both the unrestricted and restricted general fund as a result. Goes from, from what we originally had at thirty-two point three eight million dollars up to fifty-nine point one million dollars. Now that includes the unrestricted balance of thirty-five point one six million and the restricted balance of twenty-three point nine five million. Finally, we have other reserves in Fund Seventeen of thirty-five point zero one million dollars. That is the district's solvency account. In the event of, of future economic calamity. So when we look, you know, we talk about the fund balance being a rather large number. It's important to recognize the state does require us to separate out some of the numbers and pretty meaningful ways. First and foremost, when we look at the fifty-nine point one million in the general fund, projected ending fund balance for this year. We recognize that we have a three hundred thousand dollars in non-spendable. These are, think of the things that are in your supply closets, they're, they're assets that we can't touch. We also required to have a three percent reserve for economic uncertainty. That's the fourteen million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars you see in the third line. Because this is the total general fund balance we're talking about, we also have restricted fund balance. Think of things like special education. Those federal, like S R three dollars. So we have twenty-three million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars there. We've also committed the first year cost of, of what is on the bargaining tape, what, what the district has proposed at the bargaining table for all the units because. All the bargaining units, because we recognize that that is the floor. From which we will be adding to the expenses in, in the concurrent and, and future years. Finally, that leaves us with an unappropriated unrestricted general fund amount of two point seven million dollars. That, that the board could use theoretically for any purpose. So now that we've covered the, basically what, what the update is for the current year, we want to talk about the multi-year considerations. Some of the things that we're considering or we're thinking about when we put together the multi-year considerations is the fact that we have been in recent history have had declining enrollment. And we've also had a declining attendance rate, that ADA rate we were talking about that's not only impacting us, but is impacting most of the state. So we're, we're including those in our projections. We're also including a drop in our U P P because we, while we had an amazing response, and I have to say. It's pretty rare I do this. Two shout-outs to Ms. Chamberlain because Ms. Chamberlain. In the attendance office spearheaded the collection of the, the alternative income forms with all the school sites and she coordinated with the. The scouts at each of the school sites and the, the attendance clerks to make phone calls and run down families. And really get, have a much higher response rate than we've seen in, in, in recent years. And as a result, what we saw is that our rate didn't go up because we had a higher response rate because our community in general is doing better. Than they were four or five years ago when our number was better. So this is, we should still be proud of the hard work. Because we were diligent, we really reached out and made all the contacts we need to make. And, and, and certainly the scouts and Ms. Chamberlain are to be applauded for their heavy lift in making that happen. Additionally, one of the things that we've been talking about for the last year, a little over a year, is that, that we've been historically overstaffed at secondary levels, though there's been great work to manage that. And, and be a little more disciplined through natural attrition at the secondary level. One of the things that we do need to talk about, and, and we heard. The Executive Director of U T R speak very well on, on some, some numbers that we've received from the Legislative Analyst Office. That we might be looking at a higher COLA for next year. I certainly can't wait until the Department of Finance and the administration and county let us use those higher numbers because I would love to include them in our model. They're not in the current model. We're currently using in the Department of Finance numbers. And those were the numbers that Mr. Mitchell did, did actually cite, I think, for that. And so one of the things that we're constantly concerned about is we keep hearing about how the Fed. Is raising interest rates. And in fact, they raised the interest rate today half a percent. And, and, and why is that worrisome? Well, while we hope. That the, the changing of the interest rates will slow down in the inflationary pressures. Eight of the last nine times that the Fed has raised interest rates to slow inflation, it's caused stagnation in the economy. There, we don't have any indicators today that lead us to believe that we're going into a stagnant economy. I'm not saying that. I'm saying it's something we're paying attention to. Because obviously, if, if we do experience a recessionary economy. We are an industry that's heavily reliant on personal income tax, specifically capital gains tax. And when the economy slows, it, it almost has like a double impact to public education because of the way we're funded. We're also looking for unfunded or underfunded out-year COLAs. Why would I say that? Well, I, I say that because of the L A O's very own report where they were projecting that eight point seven three percent potential statutory COLA for next year. But in their very own writing, they said the state may not be able to fund the whole thing. And they, they were saying it could be down like eight point three percent. But really, that depends on the month-to-month revenues between now and July of next year. And so as we see the state revenues either exceeding or falling short of that, we'll continue to report out so you have that context in the back of your mind moving forward. It shouldn't be a surprise to anybody in the community of the board where we stand and why we're making the projection choices we're making. So when we look at the multi-year projection, you see the, the beginning fund balance that we have for the combined unrestricted general fund. So there you see, then we include the revenues and expenses for each of the years. And so you see, at present. We show an operating surplus in year one. There's that five point three five million dollars we had for this year when we looked at just this year's finances. We're projecting a twelve point two million dollar surplus for next year and an eight point six seven percent surplus in the out-year. Now it does matter where those dollars are placed. And so you see that we're, we have a relatively stable fund balance in the restricted side of the budget, and most of the change is accumulating in the unrestricted side of the budget. And that's a very good thing, and I'll show you why on the next slide. When we look at the components of the ending fund balance. And, and we break it down, there you see that restricted fund balance. But when we break down the restricted components. There again, you see the unspendable for each year. That's about three hundred thousand dollars. We have the reserve for economic uncertainty for each of those years. But then you see that assignment. That's the value of the offer placed on the table for each of the bargaining units at present. That doesn't mean that's where we'll settle. That just means that's the floor we're going, where we've committed ourselves to spend to as an organization. So at some point. That commitment amount is going to move up into the expense category from the fund balance into the expense category. And it may be a higher number. It will have to come back to the board for approval. So what does that leave us with? It leaves us with the unassigned or unappropriated amount over the multi-year period. And as long as that number is positive. We meet the definition of a positive budget certification. And so you see, we have, we, we project an unassigned, unappropriated fund balance in, in year one of two point seven million dollars, year two, five point five million dollars. And year three point seven million dollars. Now, in the budget narrative, I do include tables that show all the assumptions that feed into how we got there because I, that the, the what and the how is just as important as the. As the outcome. And, and, and we always welcome input from all, all stakeholders. On the choices we're making. Some of them are given to us by the county. Some of them are given to us by the state. But, but we do welcome an open conversation and dialogue around those because our goal is to be more and more accurate with every iteration of our budget development. So tonight, staff is making a recommendation that the board approves a positive budget certification. I mean, the district projects with all known factors. That it will meet its financial obligations for the current and two subsequent fiscal years. And with that, I'm, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. McIntyre. Board, again, just a reminder, we're doing five questions, up to five questions in this area. If you need more, we will go around to everybody else and come back to you possibly. Who would like to go first? Unless there are no questions, well, it'll be like very shocking. Any questions? Student trustees? Okay, is there a motion? Oh. I apologize. I didn't see your hands. We're going to start a trustee reclear and we'll come back to you, clerk Smith Folds.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm wondering if we can first go through some of the assumptions. So. On enrollment, attendance and U P P. Which are the three big drivers. What is the enrollment, the attendance, the U P P? And did it match your projection?
I'm, I'm just flipping to the Form A in the criterion standards to make sure that I'm speaking from with actual data. So just, just, just bear with me, please. Okay, so we are. There we go. So when, when we put together our, our funding in the original budget, we assumed. An ADA for the, a funded ADA for this year of twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine. Students. And, and now we're looking actually at a slightly higher increase where we've gone to twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three. In the projection and, and that happened because of the state changed the formula that we were allowed to use to calculate the step down. For ADA. And so in a normal year, what we're funded on is the current. Or the higher of the current or prior year ADA. But because of COVID, what they did this year is they said, you can look at last year. And then do this modified formula by changing a little bit for last year and then use the last three years. So you're basically getting a more gradual step down. And so that allowed us to recognize more ADA. Than we otherwise would have if we were using the old formula of the higher of the current or prior year. So from a funding perspective. The number went up. From an actual perspective. I would need to actually, it, it looks like we've, we've gone down from, from, from our original estimate of twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine. We've gone down to twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight. ADA.
And then the P P number?
And with the enrollment factor of right, right near ninety percent. And, and from month to month, we're floating just over and just below that, depending on the given month.
And then for U P P, what's the calculation?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I'll have to, to, to respond back to the board. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, what I'm trying to get at is, you know, we're. Trying to summarize for people where, where we think this is going, funding, funding wise. So that, that's the reason for digging into that because of those. If U P P goes up, we receive fewer dollars. And if attendance goes down, even though we have this little step down, we receive fewer dollars. So I'm just trying to encapsulate that. Dr. Hurst, do we have an attendance counts? Strategy or plan, or what are we doing to encourage attendance?
We can bring that back to the board, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Then you answered my question about why you're declaring it positive. And then, okay, I just have some comments at the end. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, trustee reclear. Clerk Smith Folds.
Thank you so much. Dr. Hurst, would you be willing to bring back the strategies and the solutions for the declining enrollment? I just heard you say you will bring it back for the attendance rate and solutions or strategies for the drop in U P P.
We can bring that back as well.
Thank you so much. Dr. McIntyre, my question is. I don't know how you're going to answer it, but I would like you to give it a shot. Why are the, why are y'all's narratives so far apart? Right? So we'll get up and we're, we'll hear from U T R's lead negotiator and we'll get numbers and we'll get. Some words and comments, and then we'll hear from you. And then the two narratives are literally worlds apart. And I just, I want to know why. And I preface that with the fact that numbers are fixed. Numbers don't, numbers don't move around is what we do with the numbers that move around, but numbers are fixed, a fixed entity. So can you help me understand?
I, I will absolutely do my best. You bring up really, a really, really important point. And, and, and I want to say that. Mr. Mitchell absolutely knows what he's doing. He works with a very talented group of people. He, he was referencing the Legislative Analyst Office report that, on the higher projected statutory COLA for next year. He, he is absolutely correct when he says six of the eight indicators that we use to measure the statutory COLA are published. There are two more measures that will come in between now and April that will actually cement that number in stone. Hundred percent correct. Where we vary is, is, is timing, really. So we are required to, to develop our budget. By numbers developed by the Department of Finance. And given to the County Office of Ed. And the County Office of Ed says, here's some assumptions we want you to use in the development of your budget. And so we're using the COLAs that the, the, the New Summit, the Governor's Administration put together through the Department of Finance and shared out to the Department of Education. And so we're using the colas that the 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 new summit, the governor's administration put together through the Department of Finance and shared out to the Department of Education. And the County Office of Ed said, use these to develop your budget. Now, he here's where I'm gonna disagree with with your statement about numbers don't change. They absolutely do change. Uh and and one of the frustrations about developing a multi, a three-year, multi-year budget projection. And I hear it at the at the negotiations table for a decade that I've been doing this job is what you project for year three today is absolutely garbage. And I would agree. It's garbage because there are so many input changes and assumption inputs that happen over the next two years before we get to year three, that it is. Speculative at best, but it is using the formulas and processes that the state requires us to follow under Assembly Bill twelve hundred for oversight. So I I I think I think we're apart right now because of timing, because I'm using the numbers published in May. By the Department of Finance to that we use to develop our budget. We did do the update in the augmentation of the cola from six point two eight to six point seven, that's reflected here. Uh so in that case, we've used a more current number. Uh but we can't use an updated, a projected updated statutory cola. Until it's until it's cemented in and we know the state can fund it. And so that's why I said one of the things that I'm gonna be paying paying special attention to is the month-to-month revenue between now and the end of June. Because that will tell us if it's, for example, if it's at target, that would tell us the state can afford to actually fund that higher cola that Mr. Mitchell uh mentioned. But if it comes in vastly below, then then the other side or the other part of the report in the L A L A analyst uh report. Would be that we would actually be deficiting the the statutory cola next year. Now, the question is, would we be deficit hitting it by half a percent? So it committed eight point three percent, or would we deficit hitting it below? The amount that's currently budgeted using the Department of Finance number at five point three. That we don't know, it's too early. And and so, you know, I think when we talk about using a a projected number that's got six of the eight inputs, I understand the desire. Um but it does inject a level of risk. That that we're kind of, we're kind of in front of. And and so um. You know, in that case, competing interests are driving the timing. Uh but we're, we have to follow both what the County Office of Ed and Department of Finance say to use in those in those particular metrics.
Thank you for that. So what I heard is one of the reasons the narratives are so far apart is because of timing, right? That's the one thing that I heard. The second thing. You would agree that two plus two is always going to be four. Right? It's always going to be four. So that number or that. Kind of mathematical expression is always going to be the same. Two plus two is always going to be four. So there are some things that we can count on for sure. The. You know, President Gonzalez, I think I just have comments after that, but thank you, um, Dr. McIntyre.
Thank you, uh clerk Smithfold.
Thank you, clerk Smithfolds. Uh any more questions? Oh, yes, uh, Dr. Hurst would like to clarify something.
Yes, just for trustee Reckler, she was asking about uh tenant strategies and. Our chief academic officer, Ms. Huffman, wants to add to the conversation.
Good evening, board. I just wanted to add a couple of things around attendance. When we did our data presentation to the board, um I believe about a month ago. And we talked about attendance and some of the things that we talked about were a focus on attendance conferencing because we use A two A to close out conferences. So really emphasizing meeting with families to understand the root causes of low attendance. Effective messaging and engagement to remove barriers to attendance. I actually just recently took the attendance team to a meeting with the County Office of Ed to actually talk about attendance strategies. Um and how to improve attendance, believe it or not, West Contra Costa is not the only district, many districts in Contra Costa County. Actually are struggling with attendance, um especially um after COVID. Um so we are not the only district that is in this boat. Um so we're actually all sitting together, San Ramon, other districts, actually talking about Pleasanton. Talking about how we could actually improve attendance. And so. We're actually talking about thinking about an attendance campaign. We really need to get a campaign going. So that's something the attendance team is working on. Um really calling families. We have, um and just in terms of recruitment, we have the. Fair that's coming up in January, we'll go public schools who are really encouraging all principals and teachers even through pay. To attend on that day so we can ensure that we're recruiting our families, giving out brochures, flyers to really emphasize. Um coming to West Contra Costa and emphasizing all the amazing programs that are here. Um and then we also have our SART and our SAR process with families um who are chronically absent. But you know, it only takes. Ten percent of your day to be chronically absent. And so once that happens, it's really around, you know, really trying to identify some of the root causes with families. Um and so the attendance team actually has also been going out to school sites, meeting with the tennis clerks. And sitting with them in SSTs and in their care meetings to really support uh the needs of families at our schools. Uh so those are some of the things that we're doing, not enough. Um there was a meeting also with an attendance program to do incentivizing. For attendance as well. So that's also something that we're working on. Lots of strategies and actions happening. Um. But attendance is definitely something that many districts are struggling with.
And Dr. Hurst, if I may, the unduplicated pupil percentage used in the development of the first interim report was sixty eight point nine seven percent.
Thank you both. Um I do have three questions before we move to comments. Uh, Dr. McIntyre, first, I just want to quickly thank you and your staff for getting us to a positive certification. Uh it is a big deal and I appreciate it. I appreciate it very much. Um. My first question, so I'm looking at slide seven specifically for reference and multi-year. These calculations do not include the Prop twenty eight funding that we heard from Mr. Mitchell, correct?
You are absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question. I see that between the unassigned. And the. Uh, excuse me, the unassigned and the surplus. It is much larger on assigned funds. Why do we call it? Is the surplus, sorry, let me reframe it. Is the surplus different than the unassigned year by year?
So the 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 the. The surplus we're talking about is the result of operations. So that that would be revenues minus expenditures. And so did we, did we spend less than we brought in? Did that create a surplus? Then that that's the surplus we're talking about. We talk about fund balance. That's where we talk about the unappropriated or unassigned dollars. Those are actually two different things. Uh the unappropriated or unassigned is the part of the fund balance that we haven't designated us or that the board. Or staff hasn't dealt designated a specific use for. So when we look, for example, at the on slide eight, at the ending fund balance, we see the restricted fund balance. That's going to include all those things like special ed fund balances. S R funds that we still have to spend. Um any restricted program, the 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 community schools, for example, is a restricted program. So dollars in the restricted programs are are going to be held in fund balance there. Uh where we have restricted dollars. Then on the unrestricted side, we have that three percent reserve for economic uncertainty. We've committed what's already at the bar on the bargaining table for the multi-year. And then what then that unassigned or an allocated fund balance unappropriate can be used for any purpose the board designates. Some some districts will. Set a minimum there for cash flow purposes or for a rainy day. Um in our case, because we have Fund seventeen, we're not aspiring to do that, which is why you see on the M Y P, we get it all the way down to seven hundred thousand dollars in year three. So when you look at the result of operations on our fund balance with all the choices that we are aware of today. When we project forward on the M Y P, uh you know, we've got two point seven this year, five point five next year, and it's down to uh six hundred and ninety thousand dollars the last year.
Thank you. Um. Okay, thank you for that. And then just to clarify, because we've gone around this a few times. The reason why we are not using the cola estimated by the L O L L A O. Is because the county has not allowed us to use anything outside of what the Department of Finance has given us. That's correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, that was my last question. Uh so let's move to a motion and comments. Um board, do I have a motion? Trustee Reckler?
I'll move uh that the board approve first interim with a positive certification.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second. Uh let's move to comments. Trustee Reckler, would you like to get us started?
Sure, thank you. So first, I'd like to thank the finance team in the back of the room. And once again, you need to up your rewards because. Sitting in the back of a empty M P R on a cold metal chair, it's not my idea of recognition. So. I want to thank you all very much for your work and make sure that he buys you lunch and don't expense it. And then to Ms. Chau, uh I know that you're soon moving on to greener pastures and I wish you the best. And uh thank you for all the work that you did here. Um, it's been really very appreciated. So. It's December, it's the first interim. This is my little flag that uh you guys need to start working with the L cap committee. Uh what they, what worked, what they want to see so that that planning is. Um cemented, they understand, and they don't come to the board in May with recommendations that cannot be acted upon.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Uh, that was time, I'm sorry, it wasn't on the screen. I should have given you a heads up.
Okay.
Um if it's okay with the board, could we give her thirty more seconds? So she can finish her thought because we did not say it was on the screen and it was on the left.
Yeah, I just have two very, if that's okay, I just have two very brief things. Um, one is that uh attendance, attendance strategy, that's imperative. And uh everybody's struggling and that's fine. That is not an excuse. So um we really need to think about that and it's not about money, it's about kids achieving academically. Um and then Prop twenty eight, I think it's really restricted funds, so I'd be careful with that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Sorry, everybody, we're minus a minute and a half that our clock. Uh is on the left. Maybe if we could put it on the screen, it'll probably be a little bit easier for us. Um, okay, uh comments, trustee Phillips, did I see your hand? Go ahead.
Thank you. I will be voting no tonight for the following reasons. One, the budget is still unbalanced. Two, I believe we can afford thirty six point eight million dollars in increases to salaries and benefits. If the increases are funded by the guaranteed cola from the state. Three, I believe the increases should be funded by the guaranteed cola from the state. Four, I do not support funding the increases with projections. Because I believe a recession or slowdown is coming and the projections will not materialize. Five, I do not support changing the L cap without community input. Six, I do not believe the district is following the recovery plan and approved by the school board and county. Seven, finally, I do not believe the positive certification is real. I believe the district will be forced to declare a qualified or negative certification once again. And once again, I ask the staff to actually balance the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. We're gonna move to uh clerk Smith Folds.
I think that one of the issues that the community would have is this is. A specialized document. It's for someone who knows how to read it. What I would love to see is this version. By math teachers who know how to teach math, right? And know how to break it down to a point to where everybody can understand it. It's that it has to be understood, it has to be digestible for the entire community. It has to be understood. Dr. Hurst, you taught math. If you cannot teach the processes and cannot teach the rules and you cannot teach why the numbers are the way they are, math is about the why. Why do we do what we do? We need to have a. Budget report that this is fine for all of us who know how to read the numbers, but we need to have a budget report for those people who are looking at figuring out the math. How do I see the language of the money in a way that I can understand it and that is digestible? That's something I would really like to push the staff to do. I know that this takes a lot of work and it takes a lot of time, but you have really qualified, highly qualified math teachers in the district that can help you break this down. Oh, my time is up. No, it's not up.
No, sorry, you have thirty seconds. It was one minute, but it should be a minute and a half, sorry.
Thank you so much. Dr. Hurst, that will be one of the requests that I have. And you have a, I have a community meeting and ask the community if they can digest the report before it comes to the board and then the entire community gets to see it. If they of a small group of people can understand it and digest it, then bring it forward so everybody can understand it and digest it. The final thing is the thirty six million that we heard about last week. It said it would not be less going forward. And if that's true, what does that look like for our numbers? What does that do to our numbers and what does it do to our projection? Thank you so much. I'm complete.
Thank you, clerk, uh Smith Folds. Uh any other comments? Okay, for my comments, uh before we go to the vote, uh, Dr. McIntyre, again, I want to thank you and our staff, uh who's in the audience. Uh I mean, I do think there's amazing progress. Um I do think that we just have to be consistent. Um in the spring, you know, we're saying we gotta trust staff. Uh and I agree, we gotta trust staff, these are the real numbers. Uh otherwise, who do we trust? Um. I do, I do want to share some concerns from site seven and eight, positive concerns. Which to me, it seems like we have more funds than I actually was expecting. Um between the surplus funds. Um and the unassigned, I want us to have conversations about those funds. So I don't want them to just sit in an account. Uh I do agree, we need to have reserves, but I don't want it to just be sitting on ending balance. So we need to have conversations about that, that funding. Um in the near future, uh, Dr. McIntyre. Uh but I want to thank you because uh I know it's been a lot of work. Uh that's, that's it. Let's move to a vote. Um I will start with. Trustee Miles, and we are voting, just a reminder, sorry, we are voting on trustee Reckler's uh motion to approve the budget with a positive certification. Trustee Miles, go ahead.
Miles abstain.
Trustee Sampaña. Thank you, trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Sorry, clerk Smith Folds, I apologize.
That's okay. Smith, Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian.
Uh, Christian, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
No.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
And myself, so yes, it passes. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move to the next item. Which is their ratification of the twenty two, twenty three successor agreement with Teamsters Local eight, five, six. It's a Mr. Tenashakot. I, I'm so sorry, I always butcher your name. I will get it right one of these days, Tenas, Tenas Shuck. Okay, was that close enough? Thank you.
Thank you, President Gonzalez Hoi. Congratulations on your new role as well as trustee Smith Folds as our new clerk. And a special thank you to our former president, Christian, for serving in the board. Good evening to all the trustees. As well as Dr. Hurst and all the members of the community. I'm here to talk a little bit about the. Motion that I have in front of all the. In front of you to approve the successor agreement for the Teamsters. That was ratified on November twenty second with a ninety three percent vote from the membership. We had met over several months and had agreed on a two-year successor agreement going back to July one, twenty twenty two through June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. The contract focuses on providing additional support for students. And addressing some of the inequities in relation to the actual positions that were compared in the community. The full text of changes are in the attached documents with the highlights. Some of the areas that we addressed were that we provided significant amount of work to clean up the contractual language. Um first and foremost, um again, part of that too is that we focused in on technical positions. And the need to have them in our schools. And what we can do to ensure that they are recruited and retained within the district. Part of the contract as well dealt with nutritional meals of having high quality, continued high quality meals for our students. And as part of that, we increased the flexibility of our staffing and improved the cleanliness in the cafeterias. Also, in addition to that, we had general wage increases for year one and two. And continued uh support of the Kaiser Permanente, the Teamster rate at the ninety percent level for the membership there. Accordingly. Uh we are recommending um to the board that they approve. Uh the respective contract with the costing, which I'll review quickly. Uh and with the supporting documents for the AB twelve hundred that was submitted to the county and also approved. The financial impact with that. Was four million and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars from the general fund. Furthermore, there was also additional costs that were from food services from Fund Thirteen as well as for M and O. That were specifically for those departments. The supporting documentation is attached. Again. I respectfully request from the board a motion to adopt and approve the successor agreement for the Teamsters. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Tenas Chuck. Um, okay, let's open it up for questions. Board, any questions? Clerk Smith Folds.
I just have one question. Do you know? How many Teamsters voted? It was a ninety-plus percent for yes, right? But do you know the number of Teamsters that voted?
I know I do not, trustee Smith Folds. That was not provided to me for information.
Thank you so much. I'm complete, President Hoi.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion to? Ratify the successor agreement for Teamsters?
Um, I'll move it, but I do have a question though that I'd like clarified if that's okay.
Sure, please go ahead and ask your question first.
So in, uh, the agenda, item E two. Says that we're ratifying a twenty-two to twenty-three successor agreement. But the actual draft says twenty-two to twenty-four. So may we clarify exactly the years that this successor agreement is in, will be in? For.
My apologies, trustee Reckler. Uh, that was a simple, um, error in relation to, uh. Mistyping. It is, again, a two-year successor agreement. Effective July one, twenty-twenty-two, expiring June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Then in that case, I will ratify. The successor agreement with the dates, June, July one, twenty-twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Is there twelve seconds?
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and it's been seconded. And thank you, trustee Reckler, for finding that. Are there any comments? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
I have a comment. I just want to say congratulations to everyone and thank you for your hard work. It was tough to get here and I really appreciate, appreciate everybody's. Efforts and I'm really happy to see this done. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Are there any other comments? Okay, let's move on to a vote. Again, the votes to ratify the two-year contract. Let's start with trustee Miles.
Miles, yeah.
Trustee Sampaña.
Sampaña, yes.
Your trustees, clerk Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian.
Uh, Christian, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
And myself say yes. It passes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the hard work. Um, let's move to the MOU between UTR and WCCUSD. Uh, I'm assuming it's again, uh, Mr. Tenas, Tenas Chuck.
Thank you, President Gonzalez Hoi. This was a, uh, MOU that was entered in between UTR and, uh. And the district. In relation for the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, or sorry, my apologies, twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, there's two components of it. The first one is in relation to the bilingual combination classes. The current collective bargaining agreement does not have any provisions as it relates to bilingual stipend or pay. For teachers that wish to take a combination class for bilingual for elementary. Accordingly, for this year, the union being UTR and the district met to come up with. A form of compensation for these individuals that had agreed to take a bilingual combination class. Being at the rate who voluntarily accepted at one-twenty of their current salary. This was agreed upon by the union and the district. Furthermore. The second component dealt with secondary. Uh, right now, we, this was, uh, discussed with and I have to congratulate and, uh. Ed Services and, uh, Summer Sigler for bringing this to the attention of flexibility for. Not only, uh, the district, but also ensuring a compensation for, uh, those teachers that voluntarily agreed. To take on additional students. And also to keep their prep classes, but it's helped both sides come up with a joint resolution. And keeping the student level still at thirty-five, but allow greater flexibility. And that would be to pay those teachers, um, at the one-twenty rate. Um, but then clarifying that they would not be eligible for the eight. UTR eight plus three point five. Uh, accordingly, uh, we again respectfully request the board, um, adopt this. MOU for the calendar, or for the school year of twenty-two, twenty-three, while we're still in contractual negotiations with UTR. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Trustee Reckler.
I have a question. So the MOU was signed on September eighth, but it didn't come to the board until December fourteenth. Which seems like a long time. Is there? Is there a timeline that you have to bring these to the board or what? Took so long, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. I can answer that very simply. That was my oversight. I was in contract negotiations with the other units and we're trying to bring. Everything and this was simply an oversight on my part, not to bring it in advance prior to this meeting. So my sincere apologies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the MOU between UTR and WCCUSD?
I'm happy to move, uh, the MOU. Between UTR and WCCUSD.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Smith Folds, second.
Thank you very much. Let's go to comments. Anyone has any comments? Okay, I don't see any hands. I do have one comment. Um, I, I want to say thank you for the work, but I do, uh, want to say that. I'm voting yes on it, but. I am not okay with having combo classes in bilingual classrooms. Uh, I know we have a huge need. I mean, I just know that's a reality. That's why I'm voting yes. But combo classes and bilingual, uh, courses is really difficult to do. I mean, we're already teaching students two, two languages. Uh, and then on top of that, we have two grade levels that you have to teach and differentiate. I mean, it's a huge lift. So, so I hope that we don't have to do this in the future. I know that we have a very robust. Uh, a plan to recruit amazing educators. Uh, but this one really hurts my heart because I was actually the president on UTR that put. That we shouldn't have combo classes in their contract, which is ironic that I'm voting tonight to take it away. So, so I just wanted to put that on staff. Uh, thank you, but thank you. Um, okay, let's move to the vote. Uh, again, we're voting to ratify this MOU. Uh, trustees, trustee Miles, we'll start with you.
Miles, yeah.
Thank you, trustee Sampaña.
Sampaña, yes.
Thank you, clerk Smith Folds.
With the same reservations, yes.
Thank you, uh, trustee Christian.
Uh, yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, and I am a yes, and it passes. Thank you so much, staff. Um, okay, we are now done, so we're gonna move to comments from the board. Uh, for comments, I'm sorry, I'm, I know. Oh, I'm so sorry, uh, Dr. Greenwood. I forgot your item. I feel so bad. Um. We're gonna go to E four, uh, provisional, uh, internship permits.
Good evening, board. We're recommending approval for provisional intern, uh, permits, better known as PIPs.
Thank you, Dr. Greenwood. Um, are there any questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
Uh, Smith Folds moves, uh, item E four provisional internship per, uh, permit, PIP.
Thank you, clerk Smith Folds. Trustee Reckler, you second me?
Sure, that's fine. I'll second it.
Thank you so much. Any comments? Okay, let's go straight to the vote. Trustee Miles, we'll start with you.
Miles, yeah.
Thank you, trustee Sampaña.
Sampaña, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so much. It passes. Okay, now we're actually moving to comments from the board. We're gonna do two minutes. If we could, please put up the clock on the screen before we start. Um, and then. Who would like to get us started with, with, with comments? No, I'm sorry, we have an order.
President Gonzalez Hoi, I had a question.
Yes.
Were we gonna recognize student trustees tonight? Oh, it's not doing nicely. Never mind. I thought you told me that, Dr. Hurst. I'm gonna blame you for that. All right, never mind. Uh.
Would our student trustees like to get us started with comments? Trustee Miles, do you have any comments tonight?
Uh, sure, okay.
Thank you.
Hi, uh. I know I don't usually say a lot during meetings and it's usually because I'm confused with all the big terms. If you've noticed. My track record throughout these board meetings, because I know my term's coming to an end. I usually abstain when there's anything that has to do with financial information. Because I do not feel like I am informed enough to put a vote. In with like good intentions. Uh, I do agree with trustee, uh, well clerk Smith Folds, uh, that. The financial information should be a little more accessible, but I do appreciate, uh, Mr. McIntyre's, uh, explanations because they're. I assume they're good. I'm just not smart enough to understand that yet. I'm in economics, so. Still learning. Um. Let's see. I do think that, uh, the information, uh, what was expressed by all the UTR members and all the teachers who have just been continuously saying the same things. Should be acknowledged a little bit more. I don't know how that actually works. Outside of these meetings, but I do feel like it's sad that we have to keep hearing the same stories over and over and over again and it feels like nothing's getting done, like ninety-seven percent. Is a really high number. I don't know. Um, but that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Miles. We're gonna go to trustee Sampaña. Sorry, hold on, trustee Sampaña. I want to make sure you get your two minutes. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Oh, just rolling off of what trustee Miles said. I haven't had much to say during these meetings, but. With the holidays coming and it's been the last meeting of the year for the semester, I just want to say. I appreciate the experience everyone's given and I know this is the second to last, you know, meeting before actually the term comes to end, but I just want to. Express gratitude especially to Ms. Liz Sanders and the Communication Department for her help on the survey. To Mr. Mila, to, uh. Sorry, clerk, just, um. Clerk Smith Folds and President Gonzalez Hoi and the rest of the board for the guidance they gave and Dr. Hurst. And to say thanks to, um, former president Christian for his leadership on the board. And I just want to say happy holidays for whatever holiday you celebrate this year. And it's also a holiday blessing that this meeting ends so early. But, um, yeah, I just want to say thank you and also. We, I appreciate our community, our educators. They deserve a lot more than what we offer. And our students, peers, staff, parents. And also. Tomorrow is gonna be again, the Impact Education Meeting at six fifteen PM, so please come if you want to. And trustee Miles and I will be facilitating the youth breakout session and that's all I have to say. I just want to say happy holidays.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move to clerk Smith Folds.
President Gonzalez Hoi, could you come back to me?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Uh, trustee Christian.
Yeah, um, just want to say, you know, this evening has been, uh, great. Um. I just want to say, you know, to our young people who, uh, to our sports teams. Who, uh, diligently worked hard, you know, throughout the sports season. Um, sports brings in a lot of revenue to our schools. And I think we need to really boost sports up to make sports what it, it could become, uh, at all of our school sites. Making sure that, uh. Our sports program is moving. Um, also want to say is that, uh, we about to go into a holiday. Uh, and I'm gonna say to everybody, have a wonderful, you know, uh, holiday and enjoy yourselves. And stay out of trouble and, um, just, just focus on doing what's right. Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Christian. Uh, trustee Phillips?
Thank you. Um, I want to start by, uh, congratulating trustee Reckler. Uh, and President Gonzalez Hoi on their reelections. Uh, I look forward to working, uh, with you, uh, moving forward as well. Um, I also want to say congratulations to President Gonzalez Hoi and. Clerk Smith Folds on their election to board leadership. And I would like to thank, uh, past president Christian. For his time of service. Um, more congratulations this evening to the El Cerrito and Penal. Uh, Valley families on their, uh. Great seasons on their championships. And, uh, lastly, I just want to say thank you to everyone who, uh, is in this system. Um, this has been an interesting first half of the year. Uh, folks have worked hard. Um, and I hope that everyone has a good, uh, happy holiday and, uh, see you in January.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Reckler?
Thank you. So I'd like to begin by thanking trustee Christian for his service as board president. Uh, you were, will be there. We needed at that time. You were calm and steady. And I really appreciate, uh, all you did to work through twenty-two, twenty-two, which was not an easy year. Um, and I saw you grow immensely and I really appreciate that and I just wanted to let you know that. Um, congratulations to new board leadership who gets to take us through, uh, the rest of the school year and into, uh, you know, all of twenty-twenty-three. So. That's great and looking forward to your direction and leadership. I also want to thank the Gauchos again. I went to most of the games this year and I think many of you know, I'm not really very sports-minded. But I loved watching them and watching them work as a team and watching them win. I mean, I really enjoyed myself at these games and I really want to thank. Uh, ECHS administration, Patty, Jacob, uh, Monica, Kate, all the CSSs. Booker was out there all the time. Franco was out there all the time. And especially administration who would show up at seven-thirty in the morning and see them at ten, eleven o'clock at night, you know, still working the game. So. It was a lot. And I want to thank the band Keith and Goldie Cheer and the flag team and the community that supported this team. It really was a community, uh, success and it made me feel really great and it was just great to watch community support those kids. Um, once again, twenty-twenty-two was really tough. You know, remember that COVID surge in January and there were just so many challenges, but I feel like we're really turning the corner. Certainly challenges for twenty-twenty-three, but I'm optimistic. I think we have good direction and vision coming and I think it's gonna be twenty-twenty-three is gonna be really great. So I'd like everybody to rest up, take some time off and come back ready to go. And happy new year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, well, I would like to just echo what everybody has shared. Yeah, he went. Yeah. Uh, I would like to echo just what everybody said. Happy holidays to, sorry, okay, apologies. Go ahead.
Can I go first?
Oh, I'm sorry, clerk Smith Folds. I forgot to double back. You see, we did forget someone. Um, uh, clerk Smith Folds, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. I have three different, um, points that I would like to make. First, I want to congratulate the football players, but I would be remiss not to mention their black and brown minds and experience need to be uplifted as well as their ability to play any sport. If we don't have as many black and brown students in AP classes, then we are failing. Black and brown kids deserve not only to be on every football team and every basketball team and every other sport, but they also deserve to be in every AP class. They also deserve to have all the experiences and exposure that all the other students have. Second thing I would like to talk about, I want to thank the president, uh, thank president Christian for all the hard work that he did. Thank you, uh, clerk, former clerk Gonzalez Hoi. I look forward to working with you this year to make really impactful changes. The last thing I want to talk about is if we can't have the same story, then we will never establish trust. We have to be all on the same page. What, what the teachers and the unions say have to match what we hear and what is said to us. That is the only way for us to make decisions that will. that will be sustainable and decisions that would help us move forward. I want to appreciate everyone tonight. Thank you for those of you who understood that it's necessary to have people in positions of power who can make good trouble. I look forward to making a lot of good trouble and I look forward to never, ever being calm. It's not in me. I appreciate everyone. Thank you so much. We will continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so now I think I haven't skipped anyone. So just want to echo and say happy holidays to everyone, our cabinet, our staff at the school sites that are doing so much, our, my colleagues on the board, our unions. Thank you. I want to give a shout out to our interpreters in the back who are here with us every Wednesday till late. Our CSSs custodians, our wonderful staff in the back, the electronics, our parliamentarian, Rosa and Hennessy, of course. Thank you for, for everything you do every board meeting. I want to also echo congratulations to El Cerrito and Penal Valley High School football teams for incredible win. And lastly, I did want to say two things. Thank you, board, for electing me president. I really did appreciate that. I hope that this next year I can lead with consistency, fairness and transparency. And that in a year you all feel proud to have me elected. That's, that's my goal for this year. So I really look forward to working with all of you in a different way. And lastly, I rush because I just want to thank someone who's watching from home, who doesn't usually watch our board meetings, who's my wife, for good reason. Because it's very traumatic sometimes. And she's my, she's my rock. She wasn't here tonight because we're still worried about everything that's going on that affects babies, as some of you can relate. But she is incredible and she's an incredible mom and, and incredible educator. So I'm just so proud to be her husband. And, and she allows me to do this work because sometimes I work twelve hours a day in the South Bay and then I get home and she was with the baby all day. So she's, she's incredible. So thank you for all you do. Okay, that's it. Thank you, everyone. Our next board meeting is sometime in January. Someone could remind me, January eleventh. Happy holidays and happy new year. That's it. Oh, we're adjourned, sorry.
What just?